DCT, are we going? Cool. In that case, I call to order the study session of the City Council of the City Pacifica at 5:34 Monday, October 9th. We will be discussing hate speech and remote public comment during City Council and Planning Commission meetings. I'll note that the closed session item has been canceled, so that brings us straight to open study session. If you have not done so already, please place a parking pass on your dashboard. If you're parked in this parking lot right outside, you'll find parking passes at the bottom of the stairs on the door. We do have sandwiches, some chips, some drinks in the back. By all means, help yourself. Have a nosh. City Clerk, do you have a meeting participation notes to announce?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternate ways to observe the meeting. To observe the meeting, you may watch on TV Channel Comcast Channel 26, via livestream at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream, or via Zoom with the link and the dial-in information provided in the agenda. The Zoom participation is for observing the meeting only tonight. The mayor will have comments on how to address public comment.
Please note that the following change to the city's public comment procedures for this meeting. There are no council members participating remotely pursuant to AB 2449. Therefore, AB 2449 is not being utilized. All council members are present in person in the council chambers. City Clerk, do we need to have a roll call for the study session?
I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Bowles.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Present.
Mayor Proton Vaterlos.
Here.
Mayor Big Stick.
Present. All council members are present in person in the council chambers. City staff, city consultants, and/or guest presenters may be allowed to participate as panelists via Zoom. Verbal public comments for tonight's meeting may only be made in person at council chambers. Remote public comments are not being allowed during this meeting. Written public comments may be submitted as described in the meeting agenda. Written comments will be read verbally at the meeting. Public meetings are limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Seems like a friendly crowd. I think I'll forego the rest for the time being. If warnings are necessary, I'll read that bit later. City Clerk? And I think, though it's not listed to do so at this time, I'll take the liberty of doing this twice tonight. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Tushaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rame Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Rame Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rame Tushaloni peoples. Staff report, please.
Mayor Big Stick and City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I apologize for medical reasons and having to be remote on Zoom tonight for this very important item and the entire council meeting. But what I wanted to kick off this discussion with is a little bit of a summary. And there are really two parts to this difficult topic tonight. First, and importantly, is to be able to process and talk about what happened two weeks ago during the council meeting on September 25th with the off-topic and hate speech that the community and the council and staff were subjected to via anonymous remote Zoom bombing. And then the second part is really to discuss how Pacifica will move forward, especially regarding the difficult decision about whether remote public comment via Zoom or phone should continue at this time. For the first part of the topic, what I wanted to mention is what the city organization has done over the last couple weeks just internally to respond to the harm that was caused from that Zoom bombing. And I believe City Clerk Coffey has a slide that she can share, which is a collage, a new collage, repeated from previous years of our employees standing united in Pacifica against hate. And City Clerk Coffey, if you could show the collage and not that one yet. There we are. Thank you. It's important to us as we work within the strategic plan of the city council that emphasizes the health and wellness of employees and the values of the community that the council has established and the mission envisioned, that we are vocal and visible about standing united against hate. And you see the collage there with those photos. What I also wanted to mention, and you saw a glimpse of it, is the idea of turning the "Pacifica stands united against hate" mantra into a positive reaction in a positive way. And that other slide that is the same format as the "Pacifica stands united against hate" is something we've developed that states "Pacifica stands united in love." And I think this positive message is an important one. I throw it up there just as a proof of concept, should the council want to discuss that later, about promoting that out more widely. And I would note that I would want to consult with the organization that initiated the "Stand United Against Hate" campaign to make sure that we could use the same format for that poster, should the council be interested in pursuing that. So internally, the organization has been working together and actively discussing and supporting each other in talking about this issue. Regarding the second part I'll move on to is, the council report lays out pretty clearly that there are very specific First Amendment right parameters surrounding the issue of public participation and public comment at city council meetings. It lays those out. And it lays out the other difficult policy decision, which really can be summarized as the ease of public comment via Zoom versus the amount of risk the council will accept moving forward that off-topic Zoom bombing occurs again, and the harm that does to the community, to the staff of the city, and to the city council members themselves. So the staff report provides many different talks about, I should say, different tools or strategies that cities are thinking about or trying to utilize. And I won't go over those in detail, but they include things like providing a warning and then cutting off an off-topic speaker. What I'll say about that strategy, and again, the report talks about the limitations to these, is that none of those strategies is a 100% or risk-free guarantee that the harm from off-topic hate speech is done, because a warning's required and then someone can be cut off. And so, again, to reiterate, the council's discussion tonight is a difficult one, because it's one of those situations where there will need to be an attempt or a desire to really balancing competing policies here. The convenience of remote public comment, whereas public comment can occur in person and via writing, but the citizenry has grown accustomed to the convenience of public comment from their living room, versus the harm that even one second or one word of aggressive hate speech can cause to those who hear it. So those are the introductory comments I wanted to make in teeing up this conversation, and I don't want to take much more time. And I'm available for any questions, as is the city attorney.
Councilmembers, questions? Okay, I have one. I couldn't help but be struck by the fact that the staff members who were to be honored by Congresswoman Anna Eshu felt a need during the time of us being bombarded by this hate speech to walk out. And what I don't know is to what extent our staff acutely felt those 20 minutes. I guess what I'm asking is, what was the effect on staff? I know that generally speaking, our staff would be reticent at best to participate in our public comment period, though I certainly would welcome anyone who feels strongly enough to want to comment. Can you give us some insight into what staff experienced, how staff feels about the matter?
I can offer some thoughts, and then I can also have City Clerk Coffey offer some thoughts, and Public Works Director Lisa Peterson can offer her thoughts. So the effect was great, as is expected. We had numerous Public Works employees there, and they didn't feel like they could stay around long enough for the presentation from Congresswoman Eshu's office. And so it's hard, I think, to quantify what the impact of hate speech is to any individual. And I think that that's one of the difficulties in this challenge. And the, you know, the solution to it is to try to prevent it entirely or as much as possible. And so I'll stop there. If Director Peterson wants to step up to the podium, she was very upset and continued into the next day. We discussed it, and the staff was extremely upset. They have had, you know, conversations in the departmental level, as well as City Clerk Coffey, if she would like to offer observations.
So I can start. This is Lisa Peterson. I'm the Director of Public Works, and thank you for asking that question. As you know, Public Works was being honored by Anna Eshu's office that evening. We also had a, there was a retirement in the city, so there was, you know, folks there for that as well. And four of our Public Works employees were staying there. Actually, we had six that were staying there to listen to the speech from Anna Eshu's office and giving us this proclamation. And also, of course, we had some folks that were going to stay too, because of presentations that Public Works was going to be having. So when the, when the hate speech first started, of course, you know, there was a pause in the meeting, and then council went back to discuss it. And at that point, I could see that my staff members were upset. And I will note, you know, that these were all folks that are not white, you know, and having to listen to this speech, I think that's relevant. And when I went up and talked to them in between, I said, you know, "I can see you're uncomfortable. I don't want you to feel that you need to stay, because it's likely to continue." And they all opted to up and walk out. And, you know, and it was important to them, and this is a big deal for them to get this award. As a matter of fact, we had a quarterly meeting after that, and I can tell you that, you know, we have 60 people in our department. It was the buzz of that meeting. Everybody was extremely upset. They were, it was running rampant through the department that that had happened, that these comments were made. And we are a very diverse group in Public Works, so of course, you saw that poster of all of the staff standing together. We did that after the quarterly meeting, and held up that "United Against Hate" poster, you know, which was helpful, but I can tell you that folks were, are still upset about it. And it's, it really varies with the individual. I mean, obviously, there's some people who can listen to that and maybe be okay the next day. I personally was taken aback, I would say, for a week. But I know there's other people, it'll take them a month to get over that. It's very disturbing to hear that kind of speech, and I think very harmful, at least I felt it was to my employees. I did after, even after our quarterly meeting, I had a number of employees who came up to me, asking me more questions about it, asking me what the city might be doing about it. These were folks that had not been at that meeting, but it was, I would say, it was an unpleasant topic that we did talk about. You know, during the quarterly meeting, I let everybody know that the city manager was going to be coming out with a statement, you know, having talked to the council, and they would be, he would be sending that, and that did happen that day. I think that was helpful, but, you know, again, it's disturbing. It's disturbing to hear that. It was very hard to have folks that are really directly impacted by that speech be that upset and hurt. So I'll just leave it at that.
I'd like to add a few comments, if I can, from my perspective and staff perspective that I've seen. For myself, it was very difficult to sit through those comments, even for a minute each. And, you know, even for staff, I heard comments the next day from staff that heard about it, watched the recording of the meeting, and were upset by it not even being present in the room when it happened. I had a staff person that went and was involved in putting together this "Pacifica United Against Hate" collage, and was prompted to look at the meeting to see why we were doing that all of a sudden, and came to me in tears after viewing the comments. We have staff that are involved in putting together the meeting minutes, and in order to protect the transcriptionist from having to listen to that portion of the meeting, because we're not transcribing the exact words that were being spoken, I had suggested putting, indicating timestamps for when that starts and when that ends. Even having to listen through the recording to put in the timestamps to protect another person was very difficult for staff. Will have to listen to the meeting recording again in reviewing the draft minutes, and I want to protect staff as much as possible from having to listen to that again. So it's, I felt very shaken after the meeting. I felt physically ill during that portion of the meeting, to be honest. And I, you know, for myself, I never want to have to sit through that again if I don't have to. I understand our legal obligations and having to give people the right to their First Amendment speech, but I personally never want to have to sit through hearing those words of hate again. And I want to be able to do what I can to protect others from that as well.
Well, I just want to echo what my colleagues just said, and unfortunately, well, the damage was done at that meeting, and we did our best to address it. And as Lisa said, brought it to our departments, talked to employees, and tried our best to reiterate our values as an organization. But again, unfortunately, the damage was done, and that was very hard on my staff as well. So the collage that you saw before you speaks louder than the words. So again, it was important for us to highlight what the values we have as an organization and what happened during those public comments go against it clearly.
I'd just like to add also, not just the impact to our staff and the City of Pacifica, but these, this hate speech has been happening to other cities in the Bay Area and throughout California. It's been the top of discussion among city clerks for cities in California. And the City of San Mateo recently had an incident last Monday, and the clerk there described very similarly to how I was feeling, that she was physically shaking after having to sit through, you know, even with implementing a warning, which they did, and had several warnings, the barrage of hate speech continued, and cutting off even after a warning, you know, really affected staff in other cities as well.
There was a part of me that wanted to go back and review it, and I stopped myself, because why in heaven's name would I want to go back and review that? And the point is taken well, that in your job capacity, you haven't the discretion to make such a choice as I have. I'm inclined to ask one more question, but I want to give my fellow council members an opportunity before I do.
Oh, I have plenty to say. I just want to wait till after public comment. I know there's a lot of folks out there that want to say, I think.
Right. So before we get to public comment, I wanted to ask a question after legality, because a lot of the comments we've gotten are, well, it seems like in every other context in our lives we can imagine, when vile vitriol such as this begins to percolate, the answer is no, we don't have to tolerate this for two seconds. It was certainly my understanding going into the last meeting that there are certain First Amendment rules in place that necessitated that I had to tolerate even a minute from each speaker. And as I'm receiving these inquiries from the public, well, is there a way we can cut them off quickly and continue on with the meeting? I've been asking those questions in many varied ways, as often and every way I possibly can of legal counsel. Legal counsel, could you help me understand a little bit better even still? What are my options for cutting it off when some coward in Florida is speaking words that are not fit for our chambers?
No, actually, thank you for the opportunity. And so, and let me give somewhat of a long-winded response that somewhat incorporates, you know, a response also to your first question. You know, I can tell you that Pacifica is not alone, and you're also not alone with jurisdictions that I work with that have, you know, faced this hate speech, and I think we can call it that for purposes of this discussion. Now, what I am finding, very similar stories that you hear from your staff, I hear that, number one, from just about every staff that I deal with. And the first response that I get, and so understandable, is to the city attorney, to myself, why can't we stop this? And I've had this every, with every council, with every staff, with every community, that is always their first response. And I understand that frustration and anger that I get. Personally, I get it, and I totally understand it. I don't, I don't, you know, oppose that kind of response, because I have it as well. What I, as well as my colleagues, have been dealing with since this started, not that long ago, we, colleagues of mine from just about every county in the Bay Area, and in Southern California as well, have dealt with this issue as unitedly as we can, as collegially as we can, to try to come up with a universal response. Number one, to try to see if there was a way for us to stop it before it could happen. Believe me, we all wanted that, all of the city attorneys and myself. That was our first goal, and we tried. I can't tell you how many conference calls I had with my colleagues, other city attorneys from around the Bay, and even in Southern California, to talk about, what are you doing? What are you doing? What does the lawsuit say? What do you, how do you interpret this case? How do I interpret this case? And we talked about it. And as hard as it is to believe, and as difficult it is for me to tell you this, unfortunately, First Amendment law, as we've seen it develop over the years, has said that the public, no matter who you are, no matter where you live, you have the right to express your thoughts. And we, as a body, as a jurisdiction, do not have the legal authority to prevent that speech prior speech prior to you speaking it. And the word "prior to" is, in the legal world, and I'm sorry to throw out a legal jargon here, but it's important to try to understand the legal landscape, and that is prior restraint. And for anybody who has heard that word in a legal context, what it means is exactly what we're talking about here. And what it says is that, city, you cannot prohibit somebody from saying things that you think they're going to say, based on their character, based on prior comments that they've made, based on who they, where they live, based on who they are as people, and based on their background. We are legally prohibited from doing that. Unfortunately, while even city attorneys can't believe that that is what the law says when we are faced with this kind of filth, that is what the law says. So, the position that that puts the council in, and councils all across the state, is trying to weigh your community interests in remote participation, or participation in general, your, their staff's interests, needs, and you heard those dramatically just a few minutes ago, as well as you as a governing body of your jurisdiction that has to, in addition, weigh the legal risks associated with how far you want to go to eliminate this speech. What we have presented to you in the staff report is what both my colleagues and your staff here at Pacifica, as well as, you know, and not speaking for a lot of other staffs, because I haven't talked to a lot of other staffs, but I've talked to a lot of those city attorneys, who are following these procedural tools that we have put in here in the event your city does desire to hold remote participation still as an option for your community, which some communities have decided to do. There are other communities that have decided to eliminate it, because at the end of the day, and this is a very difficult opinion that I have to give you and that nobody is going to like, but the truth is that there is nothing that we can do short of eliminating remote participation that will eliminate remote hate speech entirely, because of that concept that I just spoke about, prior restraint. So, that means that, and in the staff report, we have suggested, and what I am suggesting if, as the most effective procedural tool, but it's not a tool that will eliminate it, it will reduce the amount of time, and that is the warning system. But even with the warning system, we have to hear that hate speech, even if it's for two seconds, five seconds, you know, it's still going to be horrendous. You're still going to get that shock, and then we'll be able to cut it off. But we don't know how many speakers there are going to be. So, we could eliminate it for, you know, going more than, you know, a few seconds, a few or several seconds, but we can't eliminate it for every speaker. So, we're going to have to give every speaker who has the desire to use that hate speech at least a few seconds to say it. So, what does that mean in terms of real time? I cannot tell you. All I can tell you is that the only way to truly eliminate it is to limit or eliminate remote participation. Otherwise, we have developed what I think is the most effective warning system to reduce the amount of time that we will have to listen to it. And I know that's not popular, and I apologize for that, but unfortunately, that is the law.
Councilmember Bowles.
I'd like to hear a public comment soon too, but I thought I would ask a few questions to clarify some of the potential strategies that are identified in the staff report. And you and I have spoken, but I want to make sure this is communicated to others too. So, in terms of the warning system that you were just discussing, what I understand is there would probably be eight to 10 seconds, you know, at a minimum of, before we could, before we could control it, so we could reduce it substantially. But that still doesn't help. What we appear to observe is that people kept calling in, right? It seemed to be some of the same people using different numbers. And so, without some kind of time restriction, that could still go on indefinitely. At the, at the meeting, at the last meeting, at some point, the city clerk decided, you know, there were four more people in line, and we would stop taking new comments, because it was becoming disruptive to the work that we had on our agenda for the evening. So, is that possible?
Well, you know, I will say that, you know, and I apologize, I was not in attendance at the meeting where this actually occurred with Pacifica, so I can't speak too much to what actually occurred there, other than, yes, I know that, that, you know, at some point, there was a decision that the public comments just became disruptive. And keep in mind that disruption, in order to disrupt the meeting, it does require more than simply words. And for that concept, in terms of if you want to go down just the pure disruption angle, it's not as easy as it sounds. Well, it's disruptive to us, because we all hate here in this room, well, at least, you know, I know from staff and council sector, we all hate that speech, but it is not disruptive to the meeting. It becomes disruptive to the meeting when it's actually a disruption, when people actually physically disrupt the meeting, not simply by their words. It has to be in action. So, it's difficult to do it, to see it in that respect. But if people aren't following the rules and the regulations, and that, this is where the warning system comes into play. And the warning system sets forth the rules very clearly, that you will receive essentially two warnings. One warning in the beginning of all public comments, and then another warning should we hear hate speech, they will get another warning immediately, and then if they continue after that warning, even a second more, we will cut off their mic. But, the problem is, how do you discern in those first few seconds of hearing the speech that it is actually hate speech? Because what is happening with some of these speakers, they are becoming more and more creative. So, they are, some of them, whose goal is to speak in hate speech, they will read our agendas, they will try to tie their hate speech to one of our agenda topics. And when that happens, then clearly, we're going, you know, we are believing that they are speaking on topic. But if they are veering off topic, that is when we can give them a warning. But the problem is, when do we determine that they are veering off topic? Because the simple use of a slur or a, you know, of hate speech alone in a word, in a sentence, that is riddled with on-topic comment, it is very, it's very difficult to discern that. So, that's when the seconds become longer. And that is where, and all I'm trying to say essentially is that there's no guarantee of, I can't guarantee you that it's, you're only going to listen to it for five seconds this time, or 10 seconds the next time, you know. Unfortunately, it's like a rubber band. It will change, and it will stretch, and we are going to have to be nimble, that's another thing. You know, I will be like this, you know, move, listening very carefully throughout all public comment, because, you know, our ears, my ears and the mayor's ears are going to have to be very attuned for this. So, when you are focused on one item, it's true that, at least from my perspective, I will only be focused on listening for that particular type of inappropriate speech that is off topic. So, my focus will definitely be focused in an area, in an isolated area. I'm sure the mayor's focus is going to be very focused on that as well. It's, but we will try to do the best that we can to cut it off as soon as possible. There's just no guarantee how long that will actually be.
Right. And because we have no technical way to know if a phone number or Zoom account is connected to a real person, I mean, it could go on indefinitely. That's why.
Correct. I mean, that's another drawback under the law, is that there is no vehicle or method for us to sort of prescreen. We can't ask them for their names. We can't ask them, or mandate, we can't demand. We can ask, we can always request, but if they choose not to give us their name, they could fill out a card and not fill out their name, we, it wouldn't matter, because we would still have to call however they describe themselves, Mr. X.
Right.
Or Ms. X, or they X, you know, however they describe themselves. It doesn't matter. They have a right to speak.
Okay. And then, sorry, just real quickly, so the other three options you've identified, one is to temporarily move public comments. So, it's the non-agendized public comments that are the most difficult, right? Because it may take a while before they get to a topic of concern to the city. But, so, so just for the public and confirming the intent, so temporarily moving public comments on non-agendized items to the end of the agenda, our hope is that these people might not want to pay attention that long. Our meetings run until 10, 11, 12, 1:00 a.m. sometimes. Obviously, we might lose a lot of our public that might also be sleeping then too. But, but that's the intent, right, of moving them to the end.
And, yes, that's, and, you know, there's no guarantee that that would work, but you certainly would probably, you know, you may not have a full room at that time who would be subject to listening to it. That's another.
And then, and then we could limit, your item two is limiting the entire time for oral communications to a set period of time, maybe 30 minutes. But still, if we only have two speakers here, if we have 30 on the phone, you know, we might not have enough, or we might have 30 people in the room, and have to cut them off too. So, that's, that's difficult. And then, the third one, I didn't quite understand until your colleague Denise explained it to me, to make a cutoff time to accept public comments remotely. And so, can you, if you can just clarify what that means.
Yeah, this is, this is a, you know, procedural rule that we could put in place, that no public comments, whether in person or remotely, would be accepted after the agenda item is called. So, the mayor would, you know, we would put it into our protocols, that would be a protocol change. And the protocol would say that if you want to make a public comment on any item on the agenda, whether it be, you know, oral communications or a specific agenda topic, you must submit a card before the item is called, or you must raise your hand as a remote speaker prior to, or, you know, prior to the time the, this agenda item is called. And so, the mayor would then, at the time that the agenda item is called, he would say, are there any other remote speakers who want to speak on this item? Are there any other speakers in the audience who want to speak on this item? And then, at that time, before the staff report is given, any other future speakers would be cut off. Now, obviously, the practical difficulty with that, as we all know, and Pacifica isn't unique to this, there are a lot of people, especially watching remotely, who decide to make a comment because of the comments that they've heard previously. So, that opportunity would no longer exist, because unfortunately, we have to treat all public speak, public comments and commenters the same, meaning we can't, you know, put a timeline in place for remote speakers, or, you know, set time to end raised hands, and not do it for public in the chambers as well.
So, and, but the benefits of that is that someone would raise their hand, and they wouldn't be able to then switch to a different number and call again.
Correct. One of the, what we're finding, one of the attributes of the hate commenters is that they have somehow an ability, and some jurisdictions have actually tried to determine where these calls are generating from, they have been able to, you know, locate some of them where they're, regionally where they're located, but not specifically, like an IP address or an individual. But what is happening is that these individuals have created some, you know, and I may not be using the right technical term, just in my lay technology experience, sort of robo calling, so that they have an ability to change their phone number to be a different phone number automatically, so that it's the same person with many, multiple phone numbers saying the exact same hate speech, but there's no way for us to prescreen for that. And that's, that's one thing that the robo, I'm sorry, the, the set time period to eliminate further public comments would, that would address that problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Is it possible to temporarily remove Zoom for like a period of time until these creeps like aren't around anymore?
Yes, yes. And there are a lot of communities, you know, I know the city of Redwood City is doing that, and if, you know, I know some communities in Sonoma County are doing that. So, that definitely is an option to temporarily eliminate remote for a set period of time, and the council can always, even if you eliminate it, you know, for a couple of months, let's say, you can change that in a month if you, if the circumstances decide, you know, that is totally within the discretion of the council at any time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Following on to that question, thank you for that question. I know in some instances, we've been instructed in the past to state a time certain by which some action will take place. In other cases, it's time to be determined. Is there any legal opinion on how we would go about if we were to consider a temporary stay, if you will, on the ability to have a Zoom call-in? Would we need to say until May 1st? Or could we say until such time as we decide we're going to change it?
Correct, yes. You do have that discretion as well.
Thank you.
Okay. And without going too deep into deliberation, I actually hadn't entered the room thinking that if we were to put off remote comment, it would be indefinitely, but for a short amount of time, as deemed appropriate. So, we're going to go to public comment. I was given the good fortune of, well, anyway, I stumbled across some web thing with Rachel Carol Rivas, who's a Southern Poverty Law Center person being interviewed, and she said, "Their goals are to intimidate and harass communities and to create such a spectacle that they don't allow communities to continue to do their work." That's the direct quote. And I wanted to enter into this, because I think it's really important that, for what it's worth, as we figure out what we're going to do with this, our options seem to be either for some period of time, we would suspend remote comment, or we put in our best guess of what would allow the least amount of hate speech to come through, but what we're deciding between is either suspending or allowing, and either way we go, there is some harm that we get to feel in our community. Together, we can make that decision, and we have a staff that doesn't so much get to weigh in on it, and they get to experience the results. So, what occurs to me as we get to deliberate between these, frankly, two options, is that what's helpful to us, I think, in coming to our deliberation, whatever your opinion is, and I know there are charged opinions, because we want to maintain our ability to speak freely. I think. maintain our ability to speak freely. Because if we maintain that ability, we get to have that harmful word usage presumably allowed in our presence. And since we get to work on that decision, I just ask the speakers, our objective up here is to heal from this. However passionately you feel, whatever vehemently you think is truly the right thing to do to the exclusion of the other, if that's the way you feel, we are attempting to make a decision that is the most healing for our community. And I implore you to temper any passion you may be experiencing with whatever kindness you have to muster. So whatever conclusion we come to, it's a good faith effort to do what we think might be in the best interests of all parties involved. I have 14 cards at three minutes a pop. That puts us at 42 minutes. I don't feel comfortable limiting to two minutes. I do feel comfortable going past the seven minute, seven o'clock mark where our normal start time should be. But I do ask that if you don't feel like you have three minutes worth of things to say, please try and limit it down to, you know, I would ask for two minutes, but I want everyone, I know sometimes you have three minutes worth of things to say. So the first three cards I have Rabbi Moshe, Mark Hubble, and Dan Stejink.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, volunteers, and community members. My name is Rabbi Moshe Hein. I'm the rabbi of the local coastside Jewish community. I've been here on the coast side about four years, but the coastside Jewish community has been here for about 30 years. And I'm very proud to say that we have a cohesive and unified Jewish community here on the coast side. About half of our members live here in Pacifica. So I hope that you'll consider me a partner in working with and communicating with the, our Jewish neighbors. We send out regular email communications to about 450 people on a regular basis, and about 300 folks actually open and read our emails. So we have a good platform for communicating with our local Jewish coastsiders. I do want to just, I did come to speak about hate speech and did want to address that. But I also have to address the local event, the news in Israel and how tragic that is. I'm about as liberal as they come and as a rabbi, and I've been supporting a two-state solution for over a decade. There's no excuse for the oppression of the Palestinian people other than the fact that Israel has been, has now the most right-wing prime minister and government in power. But terrorism and hate and violence only empower extremists and have empowered the current government that's in power. There has been progress on many fronts. There was a peace agreement between Saudi Arabia and Israel that would have empowered the Palestinian Authority, which may be why Hamas coordinated its attack in order to derail any progress and any hopes for peace. The situation with the Palace, between the Palestinian people and Israel has been bad, but the recent attacks have only made it 100 times worse. It will take many years and generations to bring about healing. And so I want to thank you for all that you do to, to curtail hate speech. We know that our democracy is founded on trust and goodwill, and we can extend to our neighbors and fellow citizens. The essential quality for teamwork, problem-solving, and civic engagement is trust. The Zoom bombings have recently deserved to be recognized as hate crimes and have no place in these kinds of gatherings. Hate has no place in our community and in our country for that matter. And so let me close by saying, our society is fragile, our democracy is fragile, but we cherish and celebrate our ability to find shelter in the trust and goodwill of our family, friends, and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Hubble.
Good evening, fellow citizens, city council members and staff. Welcome to the return of democracy of the one percent. According to the U.S. Census, the U.S. 2020 U.S. population census, Pacifica has approximately 20,000 eligible voters. This room, the city council chamber, seats about 200 people. If we limit it, that limits it to 1% of the population that could be involved. If our city's government seeks to address the recent horrific hate speech event by eliminating, by limiting the potential of public engagement in council and planning meetings to include only 1% of Pacifica citizens, then we have lost and the bad guys have won. Now, I stand against hate. I, I listened to that stuff and I re-listened to it, and it was some pretty horrible things. But anyways, in a related September 25th event, in 1789, Congress transmitted to the states a proposed amendment known as the Bill of Rights, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, the first, not the second, or the third, or the last amendment. It is the First Amendment, as my college law professor used to beat into our brains, that allows citizens to express and to be exposed to a wide range, wide range of opinions and views. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not supporting that, what was said at all. I think it's terrible. But I am a big supporter of the First Amendment because we have to also look at the good that it does, all right? Look at countries that don't have that and look what happens there. Under First Amendment provisions, the media, including television, radio, and the internet protects not only the speaker, but also the persons who receive the information. The right to read, hear, see, and obtain different points of view is a First Amendment right that is being challenged by our city. Their plan particularly exclusionary for those who have difficulty attending the meetings in person, the sick elderly, those with disabilities, single-parent families, those who have difficulty driving, night shift workers, and those with long commutes, as well as all of us in times of recent epidemics and, and supercharged storms, which is becoming the norm. Okay? After painfully listening to the horrific recordings from the September 25th council meeting over and over, it becomes readily apparent that their disruptors offer no attempt to recruit others to their beliefs. Their intentions are solely aimed at shutting down our democratic processes, however and wherever they can. If we succumb to their tactics by shutting down, as one of our things is advocating for, then the bullies will win and we, the citizens, have lost. I'd like to thank all of you for your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dan Stejink, followed by Maxleen Moreno and Alice Louie.
Good evening, council members. I was a little disappointed that no one in the entire diocese chambers, forward area, mentioned the tragedy that happened in Israel this weekend. More than 900 citizens killed, soldiers beheaded. As someone who worked in 2000s on six different databases chasing down World War II victims, including those of the Holocaust, we're inundated constantly with callers like this, and we frequently dealt with them, very simply. I was ashamed that the mayor did not shut down that comment and allowed that to continue. Pacifica itself has a long history of racist comments. We've never had a non-white council member ever. We've never had a Latino council member. We've never had a black council member ever, not one. Not one has ever been endorsed by our sitting supervisors or congresspeople either. Coastal Commission requires every single user, every single public commenter to register in advance, using a name, email, 24 hours in advance until that time is taken. State Lands Commission requires every single user to register in advance. Board of Supervisors is required for over three years that every single user register and issue their intention to submit a comment at the beginning of the item when it's called. If you're not in in that first minute, that's it. They know within the first minute how many public comments there are. I think the city attorney has misrepresented what prior restraint actually means. Zoom pulls all the IP addresses. I mean, you can IP block these guys. There's a million ways to do it. I think the fact that the city hasn't even considered that this might be a broader attack on Israel, a propaganda attack in the month coming up is, is very possible. And that we're throwing out the U.S. Constitution baby with the hate speech bathwaters is just unconscionable. Between 621 and 622, Pacific had the lowest number of public comment minutes in the entire county, the lowest number. There was a meeting when there were three public commenters, and one of the council members held up their hands and said, "Two, two, two." And immediately, all members voted for two, two minutes of public comment when there's only three callers. The entire public comment was completed by 7:23 at a seven, seven o'clock meeting. There are solutions in place for you to shut down every single senior who can't drive, who can't make the meetings, every single parent that's got swim class and soccer or two kids on the same day. It's just unconscionable. You guys don't deserve to be free from public inspection. You know, you don't deserve to not have the public know what's going on. And the idea that you're going to attempt to shut down public comment is, is not only despicable, it's, it's litigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxleen Moreno.
Is there a step?
A step.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to share my thoughts about the hate speech. Let's stop bullying because we have rights to stop it. We have kindness in our heart. It doesn't matter our race. We have rights to stand up for each other, no matter our skin color. We have, we should treat each other how we want to be treated. The people in charge should be protecting us and standing up for us. Silence just means the bully won and has more power than us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Louie, followed by Reza Pimacago and Gloria Stofan. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Alice Louie, and I'm a resident in Pacifica Shaw Park. I lived with my family in Pacifica since 1983. And I'm very proud of our city. And today, I'm here to spread love and unity. [singing] From the young woman, you send the darling, sing the song so true. Oh, say, can't you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight. All the rainbows we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, and the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. I'm about to cry. I'm so sorry. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, or the land of the free, free, and the home of the brave? We are the world. We are the children. We are the ones who make a brighter day, so let's start giving. There's a choice we're making. We're saving our own lives. It is true, we make a better day, just you and me. Can we do this together? We are the world. We are the children. We are the ones who make a brighter day, so let's start giving. There's a choice we're making. We're saving our own lives. It's true, we make a better day, just you and me. I'm so sorry. I didn't, I didn't sing good today because I'm so emotional. I was about to cry and my, 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 my singing is shaky.
Reza.
Hi, my name is Rosa Pumacayo. I'm from Peru. I'm immigrant. I came when I was 12 years old. So my speech here is about also the hate speech that happened last Monday. For many years, people of colors and minorities and unrepresented have been and are being oppressed. Today, discrimination, racism, and oppression might seem invisible to many, but it's still living in the mark in our new generations, our children's. We need to stop hate towards people of color and minorities and unrepresented people so that we can embrace richness and beauty in our differences. This can only be done through education and be opening ourselves to listen to what minorities have to say about what they go through every day, by opening ourselves to learn about their struggles and listening to what they need to, so that we can understand so how to help. We talk about inclusion and equality in our city of Pacifica, but my question is, are we helping people of colors and minorities feel safe and welcome in our city? How we are ensuring equality and inclusion in being practiced in our community and not just something that people talk about, inclusion and equality? As city council members, Pacifica, you have the power to give voice to unrepresented population and make them feel supported, especially at the moment when they are being attacked by disrupted hate speech. You have the power to create change and fight for the rights of the populations that are being oppressed. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to step in and do everything in your power to make equality and inclusion a reality in this city of Pacifica. I want to leave you with this quote from Cesar Chavez to say, "Together, all things are positive." Thank you and possible.
Thank you. Gloria Stofan, followed by Anthony Spalletti and Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Gloria Amada Reyes Stofan, longtime resident of Pacifica. I was in the audience when at the 9:25 council meeting was disrupted, and I felt attacked by what I feel were white supremacists who spewed vile pornographic terms to those present and to the listening audience on Zoom. Many of us squirmed in our seats and yes, were horrified by that those calls could not be cut off due to the First Amendment, as explained by Mayor Big Stick. It was a city council meeting I will never forget. My hope, however, is that the city will still reach out to the public for more public engagement and not, not drop Zoom or call-ins from the agenda. What occurred that evening only makes those hate groups think they can, think they can censor our voices even more. Zoom or call-ins provide many Pacificans with the ability to participate in city government. For example, as a senior, I find evening driving more difficult. Also, many may have transportation issues, are disabled, or family responsibilities. There has got to be a better way to screen these call-ins ahead of time. Please do not drop Zoom or call-ins. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Anthony Spelti, members of the Pacifica City Council. I'm talking about the second point the city manager pointed out, remote public comment. So please don't misinterpret my relatively dry statement as unempathetic, as more as sort of solution oriented. This is in respect to what you talked about, how we can identify callers or not identify callers to ensure that only one person speaks and they don't have, you know, sort of like means of generating dozens and dozens of different phone numbers. I'm gonna skip over some of the things I wanted to say why Zoom is so great. I think prior speakers have already made that clear, that we shouldn't move away from this. What I want to just point out is that as we move further into this digital age, I think that virtual platforms will become an integral part of civic life and civic engagement, so that I don't think we can do without. So I think it's crucial to differentiate between the medium and the message. Hate speech, yeah, undoubtedly, as a grave concern, but then eliminating the platform might not be the best way, but to establish stricter guidelines. So I wonder about the process, how we can ensure that when I'm here, I cannot just come over and over again and again. And so there have been concerns raised about the Brown Act and the First Amendment and how the law is not clear on the subject matter at hand. And on this, before taking any decision, how and in what form remote participation would be allowed, I just wanted to ask or urge the city council, again, to also take into account the most recent rulings on Tana Walla versus the Board of Education for the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, that's a mouthful, in opinion B 318341 from March 22, 2023, where the plaintiff, Tana Walla, indicated no anonymous ways of public comment was given during COVID when only Zoom was available, as they had to fill in a virtual speaker card through a Google form. The school district presented arguments specifically differentiating attending versus participating based on Government Code Section 54953.3, part of the Brown Act. The Superior Court of Los Angeles County did not find the school district violated the Brown Act or First Amendment rights. This was later referred by the Court of Appeals. And the city of Pacifica already gives ample options for folks to give an anonymous public comment. I could have shown up today, handed the clerk a card with a fantasy name, I can send an anonymous email, I can ask a friend to show up here and convey my point while not revealing my identity. So I would just urge to revisit again if there are not any means of at least ensuring that there is only one phone number and only one speaker linked to that phone number. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Lawrence, followed by Suzanne Moore and Peter Loeb.
Good evening. My name is Cliff Lawrence. There wasn't any way to write out everything that has come to mind so far this evening, but hate speech brings violent, negative energy into this space. And yes, it created wounds, I think, that echoed through this community for a week. And what you felt and what we all felt and processed, we had to acknowledge, needed to be processed, because it's gonna fester, and that was the intention. That was what they were trying to achieve. They were trying to thwart our democratic process. Free speech is required for democracy. Violent speech is what we have in all our case. That's what brings it into being. So we've got some choices here. I recommend principally that, we've got a little technical problem here anyway in terms of delays. There already is a delay, Mr. Mayor, in a real time in our broadcasting. And what do these people want? What gives them the reward? Well, one, if we take away Zoom, but two, I suggest we take away them being able to hear them broadcast, because if we hear it here and there's a delay on when it goes out, we can keep it from going out. Yes, we still have to suffer it here for how many seconds, but we don't have to broadcast it to the world and give them what they want it. I also, I would like to suggest that your Pacifica stands united with love, be united in compassion. I also want to thank whoever, those responsible for the music this evening. This space in my mind needs a healing. The glass bowls are good. I'd personally like to see the place sage, but, you know, that's my thing. You need to keep a good energy in a place. I clean my own space, energy-wise, and I can't see why it shouldn't be done here to keep us in a higher plane and not let these people win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Suzanne Moore, Pacifican from Manor District 2. Hate speech is not protected under the First Amendment. I hope our city staff can quickly identify it, name it, and interrupt it on Zoom. It's important to continue Zoom access for public participation in our city governance. This is not an ultra convenience. It's a new method of community communication that shouldn't be discarded due to the poor behavior of extremists. Please find way to Zoom participants to identify themselves, perhaps through Civic Bell's virtual speaker card, quickly interrupt hate calls, and confirm that the state protects Pacifica and other communities as we respond to hate speech. We all need to accept responsibility for our choice of words, because words are power, have influence, and lead to action. More than ever, Pacificans need to stand up courageously to inappropriate name-calling, fear-mongering, and misinformation. We should demonstrate strength, respect, and promote evidence-based solutions. The only thing that defeats hate is the strength of love. We do have a choice, a choice of our words and action. I support continuing Zoom to encourage greater public participation. Thank you this evening.
Thank you. Peter Loeb, followed by Cindy Abbott and Joanne Arnos.
I hope that you will keep Zoom access. Because of Zoom, I've been able to participate in city council meetings when I literally could not get here. I think it's a great advantage, and I think there are ways to deal with it, but I wanted to make a very different point. My grandfather, Bernard Loeb, was a German Jew. He immigrated from Germany in the early 1900s, before the rise of Hitler. We know nothing about what happened to his many siblings and their children or grandchildren. My last name, Loeb, is generally recognized as a Jewish name. I was exposed to antisemitism when I was a kid. I was told that some other kids didn't want to be friends with me because I was Jewish. I remember picking up an antisemitic newspaper off the ground, which would publish the names of various people, and they would put a Star of David next to the name, and there was the last name Loeb with a Star of David, as if to say, Jew. My point is that antisemitism is nothing new to me, nor is racism or anti-LGBTQ speech. It's all over the internet. You can't avoid it. You can try. What is new to me, though, what I wanted to say is that hearing hate speech, followed by the mayor saying, "Thank you very much for your comment," that hurt. We've heard the city manager and city staff talking about how painful, how hurtful, how harmful that speech was. To me, hearing the mayor say, "Thank you for your comment," made that hate speech even more painful. It was awful. I hope it's never repeated. It would have been better to say nothing, in my opinion. Even better would have been if somebody on the dais that night said, "We deplore this hate speech, and we stand with our Jewish or Black immigrant gay trans Pacificans to reject this hate speech." I hope that you will say that in the future, if we have to be subjected to hate speech again. Politeness in the face of such blatant hate is equivalent, to me, to acceptance, even approval. It really made me ill. If nobody will stand for you when you become the target of hate, how will you feel? Please show some empathy for those who were targeted in that hate speech you witnessed that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Abbott, followed by Joanne Arnos, and the last card I have is Kimberly Finale.
Good evening, Cindy Abbott. Incidents of hate speech and crime are on the rise. Statistically, the increases became noticeable in 2014 and have been going upward since 2016. Some channels and social media have even mainstreamed it and endorsed those who promulgate it. As a result, a 2021 U.S. Bureau of Justice Statistics report estimates that 250,000 hate crimes have occurred each year between 2005 and 2019, and that number is probably understated because most people don't report them. It's thought by at least half. This conversation couldn't be more appropriate tonight, with the Southern Poverty Law Center having designated October as Hate Crimes Awareness Month. It's horrible that it's needed, and it's important to understand the impact of hate isn't really numbers, but individuals, our family, friends, and neighbors are all impacted. But it's important to not look away from it, or for the microphones to be turned off to pretend it's not there, because it's everywhere, including here. As difficult it is to hear, standing up and truly saying no to hate is important for democracy and our rights as community members. A recent Mercury News article stated, a council member from Walnut Creek, where they had a similar incident, state that "the new tools of communication are great that we didn't have years ago, but there's a segment of the population that will use it for hateful or nefarious means." He noted that "all it takes is for a few good people to ruin it for everybody." Really? No. We need to say that we will not let them ruin it for everybody. How about standing up to it, working through a robust, creative response, that's a true response, that can be acted when it happens, and not giving in to hate? The staff report notes that the question tonight is whether the ultra-convenience of public comment from one's living room is worth even one second of a small chance that we could hear hateful comments. Ultra is defined as extremist or very extreme, and I'd like to suggest that the response trying to shelter ourselves from hate is what is extreme. Earlier this year, when dealing with my partner's significant health issues, Zoom provided me with the only way that I could actually participate in meetings. It provides a voice for disabled, elderly, folks with children, and others who can't make it to the physical meeting place. As we strive for more openness and compassion, let's not let the hateful take away the rights of those wanting to participate. Please keep virtual public comment. If it takes a few meetings to work through how to do it, go ahead, figure it out, but please figure it out and work for a robust visual response if it happens. We saw the beauty that could be presented tonight with simple actions of the community coming together. Please really help Pacifica be united against hate and for acceptance and love.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening. Sorry that we're having this discussion. I mean, I'm happy we're having the discussion, but under those circumstances, it was hard to hear. It was hard that it was happening to us in our community. But I'm a big advocate of inclusion, diversity, and equity, and that seems to be the umbrella that we all are functioning under right now, and that accountability is the way that those three items can be included in our culture. So to disclude and exclude Zoom from our public meetings is playing those cards of exclusion. Even though it's just very upsetting and it was difficult to hear and that we were having a reflection of the minds of people that we could be in safe way with, that's in our communities or outside of our communities, it's always totally upsetting that we hear those words. But we're not here to try to get rid of hate speech, but we are trying to deal with it. And one of the ways that I've been able to be exposed to in other venues that I volunteer in is that Zoom has ways that we could require registration for our meetings, which means information, emails, et cetera. So it's like an RSVP, that you go to events and you have to respond. And so we would have some clue as to who these people were. We can exclude them. If the moment comes when hate speech is being heard, we can exclude them. And one of the things that really upset me is that we weren't on notice. This was happening everywhere. I wish that we had put a statement out at the beginning of our meetings that this is not a house where we will tolerate hate speech, and we need to be doing it in all of our meetings, our volunteer meetings, all of city meetings, that we make a statement upfront that this is not going to be tolerated. We are not a community that engages in hate speech, and we will not tolerate it. And we need to keep saying it over and over again. This was happening all around us, and so when this was presented, we were all like, "Oh, my God." But it was happening. We should have been prepared, and I hope we are prepared going future, going to the future. But to exclude Zoom is excluding exactly what they were trying to do, is discriminate against us, the regular, the public, all the names that you've been hearing, all the people at home, the families that can't come to meetings because of kids, and all the other participation that we want to include in our city. And so I know that this is a difficult thing for all of you. It was difficult for us, but I appreciate your endurance and a better remedy for this than to exclude Zoom in participation in our culture, in our community.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Kimberly Finale, followed by Summer Lee and Delia McGrath.
Good evening, staff, mayor, and council members. Kimberly Finale, thank you for your dedication to inclusivity and your commitment to our community. The overt expressions of hate on display via Zoom during our last council meeting have stunned and rattled many in our community, me included. The intentional purpose of such callous words has weighed heavy on my mind since then, and I know I'm not alone. I have opinions, but I don't have an answer to what should be done as a result of the race-baiting intolerance and outward hostility toward a diverse and engaged community. But I do know this. I am always one for turning a negative into a positive. So this is a stark reminder of the importance of kindness, smiling to strangers, stopping to ask if someone is okay when they visibly may not be, small talk in passing with someone different from us. Many folks feel unseen, young and older folks alike. Taking a moment out of our day to say hello can have a huge impact on a person's outlook, and I believe that smiling takes far less energy than hating. Spreading positivity is easier than spreading negativity. It's unplanned, organic, and free. It's also contagious. We can counteract the negative energy within our own loving actions. This, of course, will not change the darkness that permeates from those who wish to aim their ill wishes on those who are different from them, but in time, I believe, love will I know whatever the council decides tonight will be in good faith and with good intentions. I stand by you.
Thank you. Summer Lee, followed by Delia McGrath, and that is the last card I have. Summer Lee, followed by Delia McGrath, and that is the last card I have.
Hi, Summer Lee. I live in the Fairmont area. Joanne said something really beautiful, that accountability is the way to achieve inclusion and equity. Fascism is not the best response to fascist speech. In this case, is spending access to folks to our city hearings. Stopping some from speaking is what dictators do, and often they come for the artists and poets first. We are not good arbiters of what is good speech, and that's why our founders understood the need for free speech. The best weapon against hateful free speech is loving speech, speech made in solidarity for those targeted. While we were all hurt by the hate speech, there's a moment where some of us, especially those of us who are not directly targeted, would have had the automatic gut reaction to make a statement of solidarity for those who are being targeted. Or if it's not in the gut response, it would be a protocol. The city manager, city attorney, and mayor are ostensibly in charge of the meeting and had at least some time to prepare. It's a false binary to say this is an issue of cutting off speakers or Zoom, or just letting hate speech go on and, in the mayor's words, hurt staff. It is also about someone in the hearing, better even if someone in charge of the meeting, if they could stand up and make a statement to say, "We stand in solidarity for those being targeted." If it was difficult to do so and be in charge of the meeting at the same time, my request would be for those who are in charge of the meeting to engage a process that does exist, to be educated, and empowered to do so the next time this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Delia McGrath.
Good evening, mayor and city council members and members here, staff, and members here in the audience. My name is Delia McGrath. I'm here this evening to offer my expression of deepest sorrow and sympathy to all of you, to all of us Pacifica residents who were assaulted and disrespected by the vile, obscene, and inexcusable outpouring of hate speech on the Zoom phone calls at city council meeting of September 25th. Everyone in our city was harmed by this. I come here this evening to add my voice and to underscore my values by speaking up to emphasize the absolute necessity that we, as a community, continue to welcome public comments remotely in the future. We cannot allow terrible behavior, such as those hateful words which bombarded the public discourse on the phone lines at that meeting, to influence our decisions about how to proceed. I implore you to set the proper boundaries for having public comments with clear rules for disrupting and disengaging those who fail to respect our humanity and our boundaries of decency. Let's not cave in to those who would deliver the worst, most extreme expressions of ill-will, hatred, and abomination by eliminating the invaluable public participation for many who can only participate remotely. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? And we will close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Lights, please.
I heard what everybody said. I heard that everyone in our city was hurt. We were hurt. We are supposed to sit up here and listen to someone horrible. I mean, horrible is not even the word. Horrendous. And then we're supposed to make decisions after. It was very difficult for me to even speak, so when someone suggested that maybe we should have said something, that's what those people want. They want you to react. And I tried my best not to react at all to anything that anyone said. And it was awful. I am still feeling it. I feel it in my head. I feel it in my heart every day. I never want to hear anything like that ever again. So I understand about the First Amendment rights, but this is difficult for us in all sides, very difficult. And I'm going to let someone else speak.
Councilmember Beer.
Thank you for everyone who came out tonight. I thought about writing a bunch of things down tonight, but I'm going to do like I always do, and I'm going to speak to you from my heart. That experience that we all had to endure, so I was in a state of shock. So I have to say that people coming up here and telling me what I should have done in that moment, you were not sitting in my body and in my soul in that moment. I could barely move. Like, I had to turn my chair around because I could not stop crying. So my statement to my community is the work that happened afterwards. Like, we are getting together as a community, and we are working together on projects that are going to emanate love and kindness and compassion. And that's how I got to work. Understanding, first of all, I want to thank Emily. Emily is a rather new employee here in the city of Pacifica. And if you don't know her, I would like you to take a moment to get to know her. This is a new position for her. So thank you, Emily, for everything that you did that night. Diversity and equity and inclusion are the most important things that we can be working on. I want to thank the Pacifica Peace People for having a beautiful event where they created a dialogue to speak about racism just last week. It was a wonderful event facilitated by an awesome facilitator. I can't wait to do something again. These are the things that we are doing to address this issue. We're coming together as a community, and we're making things happen. So if I get up and I say, "I stand with every person of color in my community. I will fight against antisemitism. I am the daughter of a Polish Jew who had to escape Nazi Germany." These things affect us on all different levels. So please don't assume that you know what we're supposed to do in a moment like that. Because to me, it's what we do now. It's what we do after, and it's how we come together. And so I'm going to get off my soapbox right now. And that has nothing to do with deliberation, but I'll deliberate after. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone who was here today, knowing that you could not call in tonight. And we didn't take this lightly, but we thought it was important to have this conversation without those evil people here in our midst. And truly, they are evil. And I too felt lost, like Mary. And like some of you pointed out, I don't think we were prepared. I personally hadn't heard this was happening in other places. And the mayor kept a very calm face and, you know, talking to him afterwards. I mean, his response emotionally was stoicism, not wanting to show them one iota that they were affecting him. That was not possible for me, or for Mary, or some of us here, and certainly for our staff, the ones that left the rooms, the members of the public with a child that left the room. We saw that, too. It was an incredibly painful moment. I too, my family, I was born in Belgium. I mean, we fought the Nazis. My grandparents fought in the war. My mother, at the age of three, had a shotgun put to her head by the Nazis. With every peace in my being, this kind of hate that has exacerbated, as Cindy has said, since 2014, that is somehow okay in this country now, or before it was hidden and now it's not, is not acceptable. And I know that our community is better than that. I also know that our community is not all perfect and without hate. And I do appreciate the event from the Peace People and one I attended before, because I sat with some of my African-American neighbors, and I heard the racism and hatred towards them that come from members here in our community as well. And these are things that we don't see as people with white skin or think about when we go out in public, but those of color, black, Asian, Latino face often every day. And that pains me greatly, because no one should have to live their lives that way. I think this is important to talk about and not brush under the rug, and it's important to deal with, because we need, as a community, to stand strongly against it. And I am a big believer in public engagement. And since this happened two weeks ago, I've done everything I can to try to find other solutions to try to keep our Zoom and phone call-ins, because I know it's important. I know how many people are participating now that could not otherwise. And I know other cities, just in talking with Michelle today, the city of San Mateo experienced this at their meeting, and yet they decided themselves that they're working on their general plan, and it was more important to be able to have that community engagement at that time and somehow work through what they were experiencing in the meeting. It pains me to hear of the pain to our staff, because you all, as members of the public, can get up and leave, or, you know, if you're watching on TV, you can mute for a while. You know, we here have to hear it. And I'll just say for myself, as painful as it is, I can take it, and I'm willing to take it if that means that we can move forward and still have as much public engagement as we can. But we do have to think about our staff, too, who doesn't have that choice. And so, you know, I would like to talk more about what we can do, you know, how much we can limit. The other thing Michelle shared with me is that the city of Tiburon, and maybe this is one of the few examples where they had hate speech once, they put in some other protocols, and it hasn't happened again. So I'm not ready to just give up without a try, is where I am right now. And not to say that, you know, if it really disrupts every meeting and if we see that it's too painful, you know, maybe there are ways around it. I mean, I really appreciate Anthony being here from Civic Bell, too, and I've been talking to him all week about the idea of virtual speaker cards and this case that he mentioned today. I don't know if that's one that you've heard of, Michelle, in Santa Monica, Santa Barbara, where they did allow some sign-in. I know you can't control who can be at the meeting at all. I mean, it has to be open to everyone, but the laws are a little bit, are not very well-defined because the technology is still pretty new about the ability to comment and, you know, to scream somewhat. And so I think as we move forward, maybe there are some things that we can pursue, you know, in that direction.
I am not familiar with that case. I don't know if it was published or not, but, you know, I will certainly look into it, you know, should the council decide to, you know, move on with remote participation and, you know, a warning system or whatever procedural methods you want to include. I can explore that further, certainly.
Thank you.
I'm in alignment with that question about Santa Monica. There were a handful of instances brought up by public that I'd like to just follow up with. One was the notion of the system the state uses in terms of registering in advance. If you could speak to that.
Well, you know, we can always ask. There's nothing that prohibits us from asking. What they choose to say in their registration, that really, we cannot mandate that you give us a real name, or that you, you know, it's just a question of how can you enforce that requirement? So we certainly can always include that, but if they choose not to give us real names or not to give us, you know, real identifying information, we cannot say, "We cannot confirm your identity, therefore you do not have the ability to speak."
There was a statement made by a speaker, "Hate speech is not protected under the First Amendment."
Well, when it is off-topic, or if it is not, if it is creating an actual disruption, you know, we provided some examples in the staff report. A simple Nazi salute does not disrupt a meeting, no matter how offensive that is, no matter who it's directed to.
And when you say that, you're referencing a specific case.
That was referenced in the staff report.
Okay. I'm not sure that everybody has had the time to read the staff report. I know that once upon a time, when I was in the audience, I did not know where the staff report was. I wasn't reading it. Took me about three years to get there.
So the name of the, is called Norris versus City of Santa Cruz, where the commenter was making statements, but making them in connection with making a Nazi salute. He was removed from the meeting essentially for, you know, disruptive speech. That, the court held, was not a disruption allowing a removal. The other case that was cited is Williamson, where there, the public commenter actually, along with others, laid down prone on the floor, which prevented other people from, you know, reaching the podium, from exiting. That was a physical action that was disrupting the meeting. They were removed, picked up and removed from the chambers. That was allowed.
The other question I had dangling, and I'm not sure if anyone on staff has an answer right now, though certainly we can talk to our folks at PCT if not. There is a delay between when we speak and when it broadcasts on PCT. Is there some way our friends at PCT could leverage that delay in some way that's beneficial to those watching from home?
I don't have the answer to that, and I don't believe that staff, anybody on staff, or, as far as I know, nobody on staff has discussed that with PCTV. We could certainly look into that option. I would also want to, you know, research that as well, but I don't believe we have as of yet.
And Mayor Big Stick, if you can hear me, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. There's not a delay via Zoom. And so we don't have statistics about how many people watch the meeting stream via Zoom or through the PCT stream, so you have to keep that piece in mind as well.
Thank you. I think I was angling to save my comments for last. Councilmember Beckman.
In other words, say something, Sue. Okay. Well, I have to thank Christine, oops, sorry, for, Councilmember Bowles, for your comments. I really appreciated what you said. Because it was really articulate, and I am having a very hard time articulating about this issue. It is really upsetting to me. I think that my values were absolutely compromised by hearing what I heard two weeks ago. I think my ability to set it aside and continue to do the business at hand was very challenged. I think having that happen again in the future would make it equally hard, if not harder. I appreciate the comments tonight, and I want to make it clear that I don't think the intent of the staff report or any comments made in that report were in any way assuming that...
of the staff report or any comments made in that report were in any way assuming that we just see the Zoom opportunity as a convenience that can be easily changed. I know that the amount of public engagement in our process has been increased because we've had Zoom and we've had remote meetings. I don't want that to stop. So that makes it very challenging to think about suspending Zoom for any period of time. The notion of, you know, as if it were just a simple black and white, the bad guys win, the good guys win moment, do the bad guys win if we close off Zoom? You know, it just doesn't feel like it's that simple. So I appreciate everyone's candor tonight and respect. I appreciate the mayor's opinion piece in the trib this week, which I wanted to like read tonight. For those who didn't get a chance, if you don't know what I'm talking about, please look it up. You can find it online. It was an excellent, it was an excellent, to my way of thinking, an excellent reflection of what was going through your mind and how you were feeling in that moment. And, and I do want to make one comment, that there was a slight, staff had a slight, some kind of awareness this might happen because it had occurred in some other cities in the county. Probably five minutes before the first call came through, the mayor leaned over to me and said, "I just want you to know, there may be some upsetting and disruptive speech tonight during the call-in. I'm giving you a warning." And it was kind of written on a paper and I was like, "Okay, well, whatever." And the minute it happened, I was one of the first to go, "Oh!" And he shot me a look like, "That's what I was talking about." At least that's how I interpreted it. Like, "Uh, yeah, that's why I warned you." And I didn't want to react that way. It just was so shocking that it just came out of me. And so I tried to be stoic. It didn't work. I'm sorry about that. But I just, I feel like I'm rambling here, but I just want you to understand, this isn't easy at all. And while it may seem cut and dried to someone who doesn't have to make the decision at this moment, some of the commenters tonight have had to make decisions, difficult decisions from these chairs. This is a tough one. This one's really, really tough. And I, I thank you for your candor, as I said, and for understanding that this is not a slam dunk. This situation is not easy for us at all. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Thank you. I find that we're doing this a lot, but I too want to thank Christine for your comments tonight.
Oh, thank you, Sarah. Here you go.
I feel like if, if there's a way that we can continue to, I don't know, if there's a way first and foremost to protect our staff and our community from hearing this kind of, of rhetoric. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the mental health of our staff, even if they have to field just a few seconds of, of these calls because it's so jarring. And so, you know, do we have the resources to help our staff work through that? Like, you know, that's where my brain goes. Like, how can we, how can we protect them from that while still allowing for our, our public to participate? And it is really hard and I am going back and forth. And I have made comments at our county board of supervisors where you do have to fill out some, something, I don't know what to call it, I guess a registration, before you can speak. And you get in line, right? So I'm wondering if we need a little time to like figure out the absolute best ways to go about this? And if that means in my mind, just suspending Zoom for a meeting or two so they can, so staff can come back and say, "Okay, so this kind of registration is happening here and this is what they're doing there." Like, do we need more time to figure out the best way to move forward so that we can bring Zoom back the way, and, and keep it safe? Keep us safe? Keep our community safe? And so that's like a big, a big ask because I, I want it all. Right? I, I want our community to never have to deal with that. I want our staff to be safe. I'm feeling super protective over Sarah and Emily. And, and I want our community to be able to participate because I think that it is, it is what they want. Right? They want us to shut down. And we don't do that. We come together here in Pacifica. Thank you for the music tonight. So that, I don't know where that leaves us for, for me in deliberation because I kind of want it all. So any thoughts I'd, I'd like to hear.
First of all, to Alice Louie, your singing was absolutely beautiful. And I'll tell you, anytime a song leads to an entire room singing with you, I don't think any singing can be more beautiful.
I was so, so, uh, too, because I'm so emotional. I'm so sorry.
Yeah. No, sorry.
To the commenter.
I'm so shaky.
Takes bravery to sing in front of a crowd, I know it. To the commenter about the sage, I was actually out there saging before this meeting began. I have a sage stick that's been over there the entire year. And if I thought it was as welcome by the entire, of the people who are attending the room, then I'd be doing it every meeting without fail, I assure you. So in my family, we have a genetic disposition to obsessive thought. And this is one of those instances in which my brain started two weeks ago and has not stopped. I've pondered every way I could conceivably approach this. I've shared some of those approaches with various people over the last two weeks. I've been urged by some not to make it too personal. And I think it's really hard for me not to. I could tell you about the civil rights trip I took back in high school my senior year, but I think I want to start earlier than that and tell you that I was probably about three-year-old when the term concentration camp was first entering my mind and that I had to learn about this. And so to those who, by the way, I'm very blessed. I work in the middle of the community and many, many people over the last two weeks have come up to me to thank me for some measure of stoicism. In fact, in a completely different grocery store, somebody took the time to stop me to thank me for my approach, though I appreciate, it was not appreciated by all. From my perspective, I have been preparing for Nazis to come and murder my family for the last 40 years of my life. Okay, 37, I said I was three years old as it was. So first of all, when I hear somebody trying in any manner, way, shape or form, in any measure to get under my skin whatsoever, that is the point in time I will dig my heels in as deeply as they will go. I will plaster a smile on my face. I will be as unreactive and inert as soil. And as is my custom, to thank every single speaker, every single time. As I was given advice at Cal Cities prior to this, not, but maybe five days, maybe, this great seminar, they told me why it is I should thank every speaker, every time, no matter how deplorable, for the sake of any lawsuits that may come to pass. They made it clear to me that First Amendment rights trump our ability to feel good as we are, get to be bombarded by hate speech. Before I got here, I was as adequately prepared as I could have fathomed for what transpired through the good fortune that I happened to pick that one seminar. And then I got that approximately five-minute warning. Staff, thank goodness, was able to warn me. How they got the word in that moment, I couldn't tell you, but it gave me enough time to dig in my heels, plaster that smile. And as I am accustomed to thanking every speaker, every time, and as, first of all, I'm not going to be dissuaded from that by a neo-Nazi, as apparently what is best with the law, that I should thank everybody equally. Sorry, folks, that's what I'm going to do. And not because I am grateful for cowards somewhere not in our community to say things that none of us, myself included, wish to hear. Because I think the proper response each and every time to somebody who's trying to rile us, to try to get a reaction out of us, is to plaster that smile, it is to not give a response. First and foremost, upon initially hearing it. And after that, I have time to deconstruct it after the fact, right? In that moment, I do what I do best. Thank you very much, neo-Nazi, whoever, who's God knows where and who has absolutely nothing of value to share with our community, nothing of substance to add. Thank you so very much for the object lesson you are now affording, not just myself, but the entirety of my community. So I won't apologize for that, but I'll be happy to explain it and I'll be happy to explain it as many times as one would like. On the one hand, there's a legal thing that's going through my head. On the other hand, I'm going to be unflappable. And my suggestion is however we proceed, we proceed as though we are not going to be reacting to whatever stimulus they give us, because that is what they want. And frankly, at some point, I don't think they care what the response is, whether or not it's turning off the remote comment or not. Now, I'm probably going to agree with everybody in the public who spoke in favor of keeping it, in terms of, I think they would prefer we take it away. And that's what I get to weigh in my deliberation against those who stand to actually be harmed by it. So like I said, I feel like from my perspective, I've spent about four decades or so preparing for neo-Nazis invariably coming and murdering my family, as once upon a time they surely did. It's recent enough memory, even though I didn't happen to be personally there. I got to visit Buchenwald 2019 before the pandemic began. I'm so grateful that I had that opportunity when I was able to travel. So as far as I'm concerned, my personal bias is, I agree with many of the speakers who said, "Well, guess what? This is what life looks like. This is the time and place we are in." And frankly, maybe there's a reason why we should all be exposed to it, to remind us that it is very much alive and present. It is what we stand against. And it is what I think we should learn how not to respond to. But it's hard for me to weigh that bias against what is responsible for a community who doesn't necessarily need to hear it. It's hard for me to turn to my staff, who we pay, who I don't want to leave screaming in this moment and say, "Guess what? We get to hear this indefinitely." That's hard for me. Personally, I think that every human being should be hearing it right now. The entire nation just visited Pacifica. Congratulations. The entire world just visited Pacifica. Congratulations. Israel, I'll be mentioning it during my personal communications later. It's scheduled on my itinerary. It's hard for the, hold hostage the people that we're paying and say, "Well, this is what you get to transcribe," when I can't bear going back and looking at the job I did for 20 minutes. For me to turn to my people who I just said, "Okay, you needed to describe it," almost verbatim, to then turn to them and say, "Now go back and listen to it as many times as it takes for you to get that transcript right." That's hard for me. I think that if the exercise is one in which we learn how to come together as a community, learn to love each other, learn to be kind to one another, and we expose each other to it within the context of, we're going to learn how not to react to it in the way that they want us to, which is in every way reactive and negative, I'm all for it. That being said, I will now defer to my fellow council members because given my bias, I do not feel like I am in a place to, one way or the other, say which idea is the better
Well, maybe city staff or city attorney or city manager.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. As I started out this evening, this is a, a very difficult topic. One of the public commenters said that the staff report presented a binary decision to the council and that's not the case at all. This is one of degrees. It's a decision about to what degree of risk of this happening again, process moving forward would allow or not. And on the one end, the highest degree of not allowing this to happen is to temporarily not do Zoom public comment. We heard a lot of speakers and a lot of comments that that may not be acceptable and that some amount of the harm done by hate speech is acceptable to allow. And so that's the degree, the, the sort of spectrum that the council has to deliberate about. What I want to try to focus the council on is we have an immediate decision about what we're going to do, beginning with Monday's Joint City Council Planning Commission discussion about the housing element and what we'll do about remote Zoom public comment. And then we also have a process that would need to unfold if the council's interested in continuing to allow Zoom, but putting into place some of the other procedures, which again, none of them will prevent hate speech from happening in the future. Next week, next month, next year, whenever it happens, the First Amendment has protections to allow that. So that will happen and the harm from that will occur, but we'll need to research more and if, if we're going to go with any of the types of strategies mentioned in the staff report or other evolving technologies and analyze those against what the First Amendment and the Brown Act allow or don't allow, and, and then put those procedures in place. This is not something that's going to happen overnight, as the council's aware. When Zoom came into being and we, at first, were doing phone-in public comment, that was a, a, you know, procedural challenge and we figured that out. And then when we moved to Zoom hybrid, that was a procedure and technological challenge and we figured that out. So it'll, it'll take some time to figure out what the procedures should be that reduce the risk as much as possible that it may happen. So I'm seeking council's direction about any of those strategies mentioned or about whether Zoom public comment should continue in the near future or be suspended for the near future. And specific direction about what we're going to do on Monday for the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting.
By the way, before you go, Christine, as my fellow councilmembers do, I did want to take a moment to thank you. After all, over the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to work through this issue with you. And so I might be in a position to know exactly how extensively you've worked on it, how much consideration and time you've placed in it. And I'm very grateful for the work you've done. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tiger. And I, I really appreciate being able to talk to you these past two weeks too. And our relationship has deepened with the honesty in these difficult conversations. So there is some good that can come out of this, this horrible experience. I, I just wanted to share, I didn't, I didn't even think about the, our next meeting being the joint study session on the housing element. One, that is such an important conversation for our community. This is where we're talking about all the sites in particular that we've been wanting to talk about here for a long time. So I'm, I'm not feeling comfortable or, or hoping that we can find some other ways to, to make the meetings better. I, I also I also wanna say that when this happened two weeks ago, we also had a joint study session with our planning commission, and we were running late because of these comments, and our planning commissioners were in the room, and our planning chair was personally, emotionally affected. And I'm sharing this because I know how she feels about it, and she has told me that, as painful as it was, she does not want to stop Zoom commenting either. And she felt personally targeted, you know, by those comments. So I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels, and, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to get their opinions in that, in that amount of time. So personally, I would like to try some of these strategies next week. And we can talk about, and maybe, I think, maybe we can even do all of them. You know, certainly the warning system, limiting a certain amount of time for oral communications, you know, not allowing people to raise their hand after the first minute or so, so that we don't have repeat comments. And, you know, I'm generally not comfortable moving all public comments on non-agendized items to the end of the meeting, 'cause, like, our last meeting went till 1:00. I, you know, I think we'll be missing community members being able to give us input if we do all that that late. But maybe we could take a certain amount of time, and then say, you know, any others after that amount of time could go to the end of the meeting. So that's one possibility. And then I would definitely want to make sure that we're exploring all these other options and legal cases, and other ways to, to really be able to verify, you know, who is talking, that they're a real person, and be able to have more controls. And knowing that if it does happen again, we need to have this conversation again. But there, there is a chance that it might not. There, there have been some cities where it's happened once, and it hasn't happened I'm willing to give it a shot.
And thank you for those comments. I do, I do feel that I need to note that, because the, the meeting on the 16th is a special meeting. So that means that we can, you know, put in, you know, protocols for the special meeting. They would only apply to the special meeting. Because we have protocols that address how we have to procedurally handle regular meetings. So we would need to go through a process to amend those if we're gonna put in more protocols.
Okay.
So for the regular meetings, the only system that we can put in, you know, immediately is the warning system. That, you know, does not require any amendment to the protocols.
Gotcha.
But with regard to regular meetings, you know, I would have to look at these more closely, as the city manager referred to. You know, once we know about what are the procedures that you want to immedi-, you know, implement immediately with regard to the regular meetings, that, well, that will require some time. Will we have time by the, in two weeks, by the time for the next meeting, to have implemented a protocol change? Probably not, unless we have another special meeting in between, you know, before the next regular meeting, to have those protocols adopted. So, you know, to the, to city manager Woodhouse's point, if we're talking about implementing procedures other than the warning system for the regular meetings, that may take longer than two weeks. We certainly can implement additional procedures for the special meeting on the 16th. But apart from that, we're gonna have to change protocols.
So, so, so just to, I mean, the meeting on the 16th is, oh, I guess it's a normal planning commission meeting, not a normal city council meeting, so...
Well, no, it'll be a special meeting, because it is a joint city council special meeting. It's not a, it won't be a regular planning commission meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
If I may, Mayor Big Stick, I think just to elaborate on that, and the city attorney can correct me if I don't have it right. So on Monday's meeting, there won't be public comment on non-agendized items, because it's a special meeting just about the housing element. However, as we saw on the 25th, that doesn't mean that there won't be potential off-topic commenters that start as if they're commenting about the housing element, and then veer into the hate speech that they want to accomplish. So we would have to implement a warning system in that case, and endure the harm that they achieve by the second story, however long till the warning is provided.
I feel like what I'm hearing is that that warning system, be it the special session or otherwise, is probably the most likely approach staff currently is recommending. Am I wrong in that?
I would, I would, I would agree, that the warning system is a system that, that will be the most immediate, so that if, if the council does not want to eliminate remote participation, that would be a recommendation that we can implement, you know, at the next special meeting and regular meetings, without any change to our protocols. So if, if the council is moving towards continuing remote participation, either for the 16th or for the regular meetings, my recommend, my strong recommendation would be, let's just implement that warning system. You can give us that direction tonight. We will then, you know, implement that for the next meeting.
And again, I wanna restate, hopefully in a simpler form, that if we were to engage in that possibility of the hate speech creeping through even a little bit, it is with an understanding that we are doing it with the intention of strengthening our resolve as a community to teach ourselves peace by doing it. And if not the rest of council, at least, that's the way I would look at it. Council member Beer.
Would we have to change the protocol to have the virtual speaker cards?
Or the registration? No, no, not, not, not to have, you know...
Zoom registration?
Zoom, yes.
Okay.
No, that, that, that would be allowed. It's just, we would still, as we do now, we would have no enforcement mechanism.
Right. I would really appreciate it if we could do that. If we're gonna subject Emily and Sarah to this again, then we need to do everything.
And the rest of staff.
Well, no, but I'm, I know, but I'm here with Sarah and Emily right now.
Okay.
And there, and Emily's in charge of, like, pressing the buttons, and, you know?
So, so just for that, we would need to have some time to, you know, to...
Figure it out.
Figure out how to implement that.
Okay.
And like what was said, even with the virtual speaker card, city attorney stated that it's not really a mechanism to confirm a real identity of a person, similar to, like, the screen name on Zoom, whatever name they give us, that's what it is. And even some of the names can come across offensive. It would give us a tip that it, we may need to listen closely and be on cue for the warning, but, you know, the virtual speaker cards can only go so far.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
Yeah, I, I wanted to be clear, Council member Beer, what I heard you say. So our process currently is, anyone with a Zoom link can participate, and they can raise their hand. There's no, there's no current virtual registration or that, that kind of process. And as the city clerk mentioned, that, that would be a technology tool that we would need to research and explore more, and how that would work moving forward, and what the restrictions or legalities are related to that.
Something I wanted to bring up, because I don't think anyone necessarily has seen that backstage, and I don't know how much awareness there is. The names that are popping up on Zoom that Emily's looking at, a lot of them are derogatory in and of themselves. One of the reasons why we went to, you know, Judy S. or whatever, was so that we would not be speaking those derogatory placeholders for names into the record. And Emily will be staring at those derogatory formations in lieu of names.
I, I just wanted to mention, while it didn't occur during our meeting on the 25th, from information from other cities, the individuals have researched the local communities, and in some instances have used names that are familiar to the community, that are not their own names. So we, you know, may receive a name of a person through a virtual card that's, you know, a well-known and well-loved person in our community, and that's not the commenter's
And I think it's best that we, yes, and I have a lot of examples, but I specifically did not comment on that, and not that the city clerk shouldn't have. But there's more examples of things like that, of creative ways, that I don't want to publicize.
Yeah.
So, but, but, and, and it sort of goes to my overall point, that, at the end of the day, the best tool that I have found, along with other colleagues of mine throughout the state, is the warning system. That has become the most effective tool that we have right now, and it will reduce the time. But it is the only mechanism that we'll be able to really make a discernible impact on the length of time that we will have to hear that hate speech. And there are some communities, as, as Council member Bowles, you know, referred to, that have decided that living with this warning system is the best system for them procedurally, if they are going to allow remote participation. And so I say that because we can research all of these other new, you know, virtual technologies that may exist, and we, and we can, you know, determine, you know, what I know to date from other communities, you know, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors, they have done everything technologically, and not only what their sheriff's office could do, but what their district attorney could do, to try to identify these people, even without registration cards. I mean, a thorough, thorough investigation into these people without success. So, you know, I hear, you know, I have, we have read them all. We have heard from Civic Bell. You know, I, you know, I heard new, you know, comments this evening. We will look into that. But we have looked into a lot of things that, you know, I don't think we need to repeat here, but, but that, at the end of the day, even with all those existing tools, the best tool to date has still been the warning system. Not to say that we're not going to look for more tools. But, but that, to me, is really the, and, and I think that if, if, you know, we implement it as it's designed, it can be effective, to the extent that it can be effective. But, you know, as I stated, and everybody's stated, and we all know, the unfortunate reality is, we're going to hear some of it if, if we're going to allow, you know, remote participation. And there's no guarantee, even if we removed remote participation, that we wouldn't hear it here in the chambers as well. You've heard some comments from public commenters, that's absolutely true. You know, we may very, we're not going to stop hearing hate speech, whether it be on the internet, whether it be from other members of our community who decide what has happened in other communities, to come in person. It, it will happen. So it's just a difficult decision, and I empathize for all of you.
It seems like we need to bring this to conclusion for tonight. And so what I'm hearing is that there's an interest in implementing the warning system, as city attorney was just describing. I'm also hearing an interest in investigating a virtual speaker card and implementing that as soon as possible. I heard a not interest in moving public comment for items not on the agenda to the end of the meeting. And I agree with the point of view that that would limit our own community from speaking. We, we had that happen last time.
Yeah, 'cause we switched to that one.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. As much as I would like to, you know, put a safety bubble around everyone in Pacifica, I don't think it's realistic for us to do that. I think the safety that we can create for ourselves comes from having a strong unwavering reaction to this kind of hate speech. And so learning how to equip myself with the tools to not react and be stoic will be a challenge. I, I think I would like to, as we have our land acknowledgement, as we have other protocols, I would like part of the process to include looking at if there is a way to include a statement from the council about our position on hate speech in the beginning of our meetings. I would like to see that happen. And I don't know what this, you know, the most powerful way in which we do that is to have us, you know, each read it on a rotating basis, or do a vote, and each of us have a voice vote, claiming, you know, where we stand on the issue. I don't know what the right answer is, but I think it would be...
It might be solidarity, solidarity.
A statement of solidarity, yeah. That's, those are the things that immediately at their top of my mind. Others, if you have other things. I know the mayor wanted to have us take this.
Just to add to, oh, Susan, my... Sorry. Just to add to, Suza, Planning Chair Samantha Hauser did read such a, did prepare such a statement at the last planning commission meeting. She, she told me afterwards, like, "I'm not sure if that was allowed," but there's definitely interest in doing that there as well.
I came into this meeting thinking that I wanted to not have public comment because of the hurtfulness of what happened. I have changed, and I understand the importance of people not being able to be here. And there are people who come here when it's difficult, and it's hard sometimes, but I have changed on that. And I think the registration in advance is gonna help a little bit, but not much, because people can cheat and lie on there, too. But maybe it'll deter a few people. And I agree with the other items that have been brought up by council.
It sounds like we have consensus. Staff, do you have the direction you need?
So, Mayor Big Stick, what I'm hearing is that the council wants to continue Zoom public comment, including at Monday's special meeting and thereafter, for now. That we will immediately employ the warning system to our, to the best of our ability to do that during the meetings. And that we will look into developing a, you know, solidarity statement, or whatever the, and there's some samples that have been flowing around, so we can look at those, to include those in the agenda and to be read. I don't know if that'll be in place for the Monday meeting, but perhaps for the next council meeting. And then we'll start doing some research about various technology tools, such as virtual registration cards, and how that might work. And that would require potentially bringing an item back to council, depending on the cost of those technologies, 'cause there are some costs related to those. Did I miss anything?
I have a light from Council member Beer.
I was just thinking, maybe this year at goal-setting, we can have some time to maybe bring someone in to facilitate, to help us learn new ways to respond. Maybe there's somebody out there that can come in and help us with that.
And to that point, I imagine, given the recent rise in this issue, the Cal cities will probably continue to have even more trainings about that in the future as well. So it's another resource to look to.
And I just want to add, if, if we find that we are still getting a lot of repeat callers, I mean, I'm, I'm happy looking at the option of a cutoff time for people raising their hand and so forth, too, so that they can't keep raising their hand.
I think we start with the direction that City Manager already has, and should we continue to have these experiences, I think we're going to have to reevaluate as we go along and go from there. So, City Manager, you have what you need?
Yes.
City Attorney, you're comfortable? Okay, so, before adjourning this study session, I want to say that what we have directed, in my view, is a warrior's practice, should it be in alignment with cultivating peace in our chambers and amongst our community. What transpired two Mondays ago was an act of pure cowardice, but even if they had bothered to attend in person, what I wish to say to our community is that these are broken human beings, that these people arrive at these conclusions because something went very, very poorly in their lives. And as one of the commenters noticed, made mention of, the idea that Pacifica stands for compassion, as well as against hate and in favor of love. I think it's very important to take this as an opportunity to notice that the sort of broken individual it takes to make it that we have to have this conversation tonight, the best possible approach to them is one of the deepest form of compassion that is not accessible to the average human being. Because should any of these human beings ever stand before us, let alone should we ever have to listen to their word again, it is because only of how broken they are. And that means if we are a compassionate community, that is our opportunity to look upon them with compassion and say, "Well, boy, are you broken, and boy, are we not doing that here." We are going to take recess until 8:12, and then we will convene our regular meeting. On Monday, October 9th, I apologize for the late start. We are now opening the regular city council meeting of the City of Pacifica. We have a call to order, and a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Protem Vaterlost?
Here.
Mayor Big Stick?
Present. Friendly reminder, if you haven't placed a parking pass on your dashboard, they are available at the bottom of the stairs on the door. City Clerk, do we have meeting participation notes?
Tonight, tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternate ways to observe the meeting, via Comcast Channel 26, livestreamed at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream, or on Zoom via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or a dial-in number and webinar ID for the Zoom webinar provided in the agenda. And the mayor will have some details about tonight's public comment procedures.
Please note the following change to the city's public comment procedures for this meeting. There are no council members participating remotely pursuant to AB 2449. Therefore, AB 2449 is not being utilized. All council members are present in person in the council chambers. City staff, city consultants, and/or guest presenters may be allowed to participate as panelists via Zoom. Verbal public comments for tonight's meeting may only be made in person at council chambers. Remote public comments are not being allowed during this meeting. Written public comments may be submitted as described in the meeting agenda. Written comments will not be read verbally at the meeting. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will cut off... If the warning is not followed, the mayor will cut off the microphone. Throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Okay. After reading the land acknowledgement, I will lead us in a salute to the flag. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Tushaloni peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rame Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rame Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rame Tushaloni peoples.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, that brings us to our first special presentation, a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the City of Pacifica occupies the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Tushaloni peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula, and whereas all indigenous peoples of the Americas have borne a long and well-documented history of violence, oppression, displacement, enslavement, and discrimination since European and American colonization beginning in 1492, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the Rame Tushaloni peoples have protected and stewarded the land for millennia and continue to demonstrate their enduring commitment to Mother Earth through their preservation of arts and culture, efforts towards ecological restoration, and historical research on community and landscape, and whereas the City of Pacifica is dedicated to opposing systemic racism against all people, including indigenous peoples in this community and across the nation, and endorses the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which recognizes that indigenous peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of their colonization and dispossession of their lands, territories, and resources, which perpetuates socioeconomic disparities, and whereas the City of Pacifica acknowledges the indigenous peoples and their significant impact on contemporary society, which include their knowledge, history, and culture, and whereas the City of Pacifica recognizes that government entities and public institutions hold a responsibility to enact policies and practices that oppose systemic racism towards indigenous peoples and better represent indigenous peoples' diverse history, traditions, values, and strength. Now therefore, I, Tiger Jaz Twirl's Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Pacifica and encourage all local businesses, organizations, schools, and community members to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and to take time to deepen their understanding of the history, cultural significance, sacrifices, and contributions of the indigenous peoples of this land done this ninth day of October 2023. Part and parcel with this proclamation, my understanding is somewhere backstage, we're establishing a resolution to solidify Indigenous Peoples' Day in perpetuity along with this proclamation. That paperwork should be on our desk in the not-too-distant future.
And Mayor Big Stick, if I may, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I just want to clarify that we are looking at whether we need a resolution to achieve those administrative ends, and we'll bring that forward if we do need that.
My mistake. In that case, part and parcel with, we're going to do what we need to do to the extent we need to do it to make sure that we are all in this together. Very good. So, I see we have a very special guest with us tonight. I know you'd have liked to have been here had conditions been slightly otherwise, but it's good to see you in apparent good health. Welcome, Jonathan Cordero.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. As many of you know, our ancestral village of origin is located within the area of the City of Pacifica, and of course, we've been doing work in Pacifica in arts and cultures, community service, ecological restoration, excuse me, for quite a long time. And of course, we've done work with the new community center at the Sanchez Adobe. So, we've had a long and wonderful relationship with the City of Pacifica, again, especially because it's so near and a part of our ancestral land and our ancestral village of origin. So, we're really grateful to receive this proclamation, not just on behalf of the Rame Tushaloni, the original peoples of the San Francisco Peninsula, but on behalf of all Californian Indians, American Indians, and other indigenous peoples around the United States and around the world. So, thank you very much. We'll look forward to being there in person soon. We've got some events planned in the safe Pacifica, so hopefully we'll see you all soon. And of course, look forward to continuing to develop our relationship. Thank you very much.
And you and I recently have had the opportunity to, I hope, become fast friends, which I have been very grateful for, and Pacifica has been working with you for many years now. But I'm not sure that everyone in the audience is as aware of your presence. If you wouldn't mind just taking a brief moment to tell us a little about yourself, your organization, it would be appreciated.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, my name's Jonathan Cordero. I'm the Chair of the Rame Tushaloni. We started our nonprofit just a couple of years ago, so it's called the Association of Rame Tushaloni. And we've done quite a bit of work in the City of Pacifica, other places on the San Francisco Peninsula, a lot of the work, of course, is in the City of San Francisco. We have made efforts to try to get land back, so we're currently working on a project like that with the City of Pacifica down in Monterrey and Moss Beach, a couple of places in San Francisco. And we do a lot of research and cultural revitalization. We just finished, by the way, today, we mapped the indigenous landscape of Los Angeles with some universities like UCLA and USC down in Los Angeles, set it on the front page of the Los Angeles Times, if you want to check it out. We're going to do the same thing in San Francisco and then eventually move down the peninsula. We do, probably the bulk of our work is ecological restoration. We've just received some very large grants, and one of those projects will be increasing stream flow and fish passage in San Pedro Creek and obviously in Lindemar. And we do a lot of community service projects, mostly organized around community gardens. Anything that's at the intersection of ecology and equity for us hits home because our primary responsibilities as native peoples are to care for the earth and to care for the people who reside in our ancestral homeland. And then lastly, and this is mostly me, I do a lot of work in arts and cultures. Those of you who are familiar with the Four Directions mural down on the waterfront, I co-directed that and actually did a little painting on it as well. And so, we're very involved in the arts and cultures communities here in San Mateo and also in San Francisco. Always open and happy to meet with folks and answer any questions you might have about the work that we do, our history, our culture, whatever we can share, we're happy to do so.
Thank you so much for being here with us, Council. Do you have any comments you wish to make?
Jonathan, it's so good to see you again. Thank you so much for being here and for all, everything that you do for us. I look forward to working with you soon, and that's wonderful news to hear about your grants. For someone who, his job depends on grants, I know how important it is, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Jonathan, it's wonderful to see you looking so well. Congratulations on your milestone, and I am looking forward to having a future conversation. We touched on this when you were with us at the Sanchez Art Center, I mean, the Sanchez Adobe, when we had our dinner, when Mayor Mary had set up that dinner there. One of the things that I would love to know more from you and help with, in whatever way, in whatever capacity I can, is recognition of tribes and tribal and ancestral tribes that don't have federal recognition, and that very vast gaping issue that I know impacts the Rame Tush and so many others in California and in our area in San Mateo County. So, anything that you can send our way or my way, I would love to help with that.
Yeah, that sounds great. In fact, I know that I was invited a while back to come and give a town hall topic, and I can certainly include that topic. It's a very, very important topic, especially for the unrecognized tribes along the coast from Sonoma to San Diego. There are fewer than five unrecognized tribes from Sonoma to San Diego along the California coast, and California has the second-most recognized tribes of any state. So, that says something about our area and about the effects of missionization on Californian Indians.
Hi, Jonathan. I'm Christine. I haven't gotten the chance to meet you yet, but I look forward to reminiscing that soon. I really appreciate your involvement in our community and your commitment to educating and people and caring for people and also caring for the earth, and that is something really close to my heart as well. We're all just lucky to be here in this beautiful place called Pacifica for a short time, and together with you and your people, we want to be good stewards of this land. And so, whatever we can learn, as we're doing the work of planning for future growth and what happens in the quarry, which was one of the Aloni Ramaja's sites, you know, I really hope that we can be in close partnership with you and really providing a vision for this beautiful place in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. And I do owe the City of Pacifica an email about the quarry site, and just let me say for the record that it is not a cultural site, the way that we define it. It is not a village, former village site, but there are village sites and cultural sites nearby. So, I'll spend some time clarifying that for all of you.
And I'd like to thank you too, because I learned so much at the Council of Cities Dinner that we had, and I've heard from so many other electeds that that was by far the best Council of Cities that they'd been to. So, that's like a big compliment for you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for everything.
Of course, of course. Always here to help.
And as I said before, I've really appreciated having the opportunity to get to know you and the opportunity to learn from you, and I look forward to our friendship continuing as time goes on. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, my friend. It is good to see you in good spirits and apparent good health, and I look forward to you getting up to 100% so that we can do this work collaboratively.
Thank you, Tiger. Thank you very much. And thank you all, and especially, of course, to the people of Pacifica for their support.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to our second proclamation about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas more than 1 in 3 women and 1 in 4 men and 1 in 2 transgender individuals experience some form of physical or sexual violence and/or stalking by their intimate partner in their lifetime, and whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and people living with disabilities increases their vulnerability to domestic violence, and whereas there were 7,945 requests for service through Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, or CORAs, 24-hour crisis hotline, and law enforcement referrals last year, and 1,291 adults and teens received community education on healthy relationships and the impact of intimate partner abuse, and whereas in San Mateo County, 112 adults and children were provided emergency shelter, and 79 households were provided longer-term rental assistance to escape their abusers last year, and whereas 479 adults and children received therapy to help them with domestic violence-related traumas, and CORA fielded 1,973 requests for legal assistance, and whereas the City of Pacifica, as part of San Mateo County, recognizes the critical need for community-wide services in order to support our residents, and whereas intimate partner violence continues to be among the most under-reported crimes, and the City of Pacifica is committed to eliminating all forms of intimate partner abuse, now therefore, I, Tiger Jaz Twirl's Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim October 23rd as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Pacifica to raise awareness and encourage all residents of San Mateo County to do their part to help rid our community of intimate partner violence, done this ninth day of October 2023. I believe we have Lynn Shute? Shute? I'm going to pronounce your name wrong. So, Shutey? Our representative from Coram is Lynn.
Lynn Shutey.
Shutey, okay.
Yes.
I apologize for that.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you on this occasion of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I go to many cities throughout the county and accept the proclamations, and I'm particularly proud to be here in my own hometown and really applaud all of the work that you're doing to raise awareness. I want to draw a brief parallel to the conversation we just had about abusive conversations and the free speech, and I want you to think for a moment about how this happens every day in a survivor's home. They are told things that they don't want to hear, things about they're not, they're not any good, they're not worth it, they're not worthwhile. These are things that our clients are hearing before they get to us every day. So, I thank you for addressing abuse on a community level, and thank you for helping to make Pacifica an engaging place to live. So, I'll leave it at that, because I know there's another item on the agenda for me to speak more specifically about CORA. But what I will leave you with is, if there's anybody who's listening to me speak right now, online or in the council chambers here, if you think that you may be being abused, we have a 1-800 number that you can call right now. It's every day, 24 hours a day, it's staffed. That's 1-800-300-1080. Again, 1-800-300-1080. Please call us if you have a question. We can help you with a safety plan. We can help connect you to resources. You don't need to deal with this on your own. So, thank you for the opportunity to share that.
And that phone number is 24/7, correct?
It is. Every day, holidays, weekends, you name it, we're there.
Council, comments?
Thank you so much. You know, we had an opportunity to come down and tour the facility and really learn a whole lot about CORAs services, and I know we've referred many, many folks to CORAs services through our outreach collaboratives, and it's really important for us to have that resource, because folks don't want to talk about it right away, but maybe the third time they come around, they'll come by our table, right? So, you never know who you're going to talk to, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, for being here. I haven't seen you in a long time, and I really appreciate everything you've done for years and years, and thank you for being there for people that need you.
Thank you.
We had, as Mary mentioned, the opportunity, the Council of Cities meeting recently, to tour the facility. I was blown away. I've always known about CORA, but to actually see the facility and meet staff was very, very impressive and comforting to know that that resource exists in our county and in our community. So, thank you for all you're doing, and we'll do our best to help with it.
Thank you.
That's one of my favorite things about the Council of Cities dinners, that we get to learn about an agency, a building. I didn't know about CORA before we came there after being here nine months. How is that possible? So, there's definitely room for education to elected officials and to members of the public to help get the word out. But one of the things I was really proud of on the tour, that you had the statistics from different cities, and Pacifica, I think especially through our police department, was really one was really one of the top referrals and users of your services. And I'm just so appreciative of all the good that you're doing in our community and giving people who are struggling in this way, you know, a way out, a partner, legal services, so much you offer every step of the way, because it's terrifying. I mean, I actually know from personal experience, I was a child, I didn't even realize that that was a label, you know, until much later. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to the opportunity to hear about the boots-on-the-ground work when we get to the Speak Up item. But in the meantime, reading that many numbers paints one picture. On the other hand, I've had friends who have utilized your service. I have friends who have worked through the service. And I think that there is not one among us who have not been touched in some way by domestic violence, even if it's not happening to ourselves. It's happening at any given moment to somebody we deeply care about. And I think that when I think about it, it's one of the most difficult things in the world for somebody who's in that circumstance to be able to come to the conclusion, I've had enough, I need to find a way to be safer. There are a lot of things in this world where you can see a bad habit and put your finger on it. This is a completely different thing where you find yourself in a situation that you never had an intention of winding up in, and the process of identifying that, let alone trying to be helped from it. Thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you.
All right. Let me bring this proclamation down to you. Would you be willing to take a picture with us?
Sure.
Who's gonna do it? Kevin's not cool.
Do any council members wish to pull an item from consent? If not, we'll open it up to public comment. Chris Redfield, I see, wants to speak on six and seven.
I may comment on both those at the same time, they're related.
Please.
If that's good. Thank you, Chris Redfield. Thank you, staff and council. I just wanted to thank Public Works and engineering staff for their attention, along with City Council, and action on the flooding issues that have forever plagued Lower Lindemar. Well, this is an interim project that is not a silver bullet. It, along with ongoing measures, will help alleviate issues caused by heavy rainfall events. Corolla Engineering's comprehensive stormwater analysis and design studies, when fully funded and implemented, will allow affected Pacifica neighborhoods to rest easier going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments on consent? If not, we'll bring it back to council for questions, deliberation, motion.
I have just a comment. I thank you for that public comment. I was going to say the same thing. I'm thrilled to see this action moving forward in Lower Lindemar. And thank you to Public Works Department, engineering staff, and all of the city working together to get these contracts moved forward.
I also want to thank the two residents. Apparently, two of the pipes for the drainage are actually going on private property, and I think that's just a beautiful testament of public-private partnership and of us working together to solve our problems. So to whoever you are, thank you. And I want to say an extra thank you to Bob Palacio and for bringing janitors to our pool bathrooms on item eight.
Oh, yeah, right.
All echoed.
Let's make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Waiting for one more vote. There we go. And for the consent calendar, with the motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Mayor Proton Vaterlas, the vote passes unanimously.
That brings us to public comments on items not posted on the agenda. Please note the following change to the city's public comment procedures for this meeting. Verbal public comments for tonight's meeting may only be made in person at council chambers. Remote public comments are not being allowed during this meeting. Written public comments may be submitted as described in the meeting agenda. Written comments will not be read verbally at the meeting. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. Please address all remarks to the council as a body rather than any particular person. Council members will not enter into debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. We don't engage in dialogue during this period. At times, we will clarify something after the public agenda period. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall adhere to time limits and not disrupt the conduct of the meeting and not make threats against any person or the public order. The mayor or their designee may remove or cause the removal of an individual for disrupting the meeting after providing the necessary warning pursuant to California Code Section 54957.95, with confirmation from the city attorney that removal is appropriate. Right now, I have two cards, one from Tokuko Arino. It's hard for me to read the last name, I apologize, and one from Sam Cassius. Toku? Yeah, please come up. Come up to the podium. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
There's a little step still under there if you need it.
It's okay to do it now? Okay, I'm new to this place, and I hope I do well. But hi, everyone. I'm gonna pretty much read what I wrote here. We have freedom of expression, and we also have a duty to behave responsibly and respect other people's rights. Thankfully, Pacifica has a law to address public nuisance and maintain a clean environment. That's wonderful. Do you walk, do you have a dog? Do you have a, do you walk your dog around your neighbor? Whether you have a dog or not, one day you should walk around your neighbor. You will discover many things, whether it's bad or good or bad, by walking your street. I'm kind of short, so I can see your face. But anyway, walking along the Brighton Road with my dogs bring me happiness and peace in my life. Then I turn to the next street. Suddenly, I find houses and the area covered with junk and trash. This makes me very depressed. The junkiest trash areas close to your property can destroy your property value. Ask the realtor, they will say same things. The owner of these houses have no respect for their neighbors, yet they act very friendly so that you are uncomfortable asking them to clean their yard. Their friendliness to me, part of their conspiracy, so that nobody would say, get rid of your junk. About 20 years ago, when my daughter was going to a school in San Francisco, her friend told her, Pacifica is a white trash. She was very hurt by the comment. Since then, Pacifica has changed a lot, but not enough. We must remove the junk trash from our neighbor, destroying the image of Pacifica. We must remove all of them. I strongly request city to create 100 penalty policy monthly until the owner removes the junk and trash out of the public bill. Let's use that money to provide people who clean the ocean. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sam Cassius is the last card I have. If anyone else wishes to speak, please fill out a card and bring it on up.
Good evening, City Council. I wanted to thank you for the council for removing the SEBOL from the housing element, because we do need to consider economic sustainability for the city itself. On the economic sustainability question, that SEBOL site was particularly problematic, because in order to accommodate the 200-plus housing units there, it would have necessitated demolishing and thus eliminating Pacifica's only family-friendly tax revenue generating venue, which doesn't make sense. Remember that the site would need to be rezoned and a demolition permit would need to be issued in order to allow housing, so the city can dictate to a developer that housing needs need to be built adjacent to the SEBOL building so that we can preserve some of our sales' tax revenue base. We also need to have an honest discussion about the impact of taking our commercial sites out of our tax base to put up more non-revenue generating housing that will only cost our city more economic hardship, as any well-executed cost-of-service study will point out. The SEBOL is a prime example of whether we have thoughtful city leadership that is serious about building a sustainable economy and moving forward with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards for general public comment, so I will. Sure, I didn't have a card, so I didn't see you. Why don't you come on up and speak, and if you'd fill out a card afterward, we'd appreciate it. Please state your name for the record, and this is general public comment on items not otherwise on the agenda.
Yes. No, yeah. Oh, sorry, my mistake.
No worries. Okay, closing public comment now and bringing it back to council for council communications. Lights?
I'll be quick. We went, several of us went to Council of Cities in Half Moon Bay and discussed the CARES program, which provides mental health assistance to the police, and it's an excellent, excellent program, and we were so happy to hear about it. I attended the Palma Palooza with everyone here, and that was a really good event, too. I stumbled in on the city's health fair for city employees the other day, and boy, did I learn a lot. It was, I just happened to be there. I've had various constituent meetings and phone calls over the past couple of weeks. I went to the police inspection, thank you, and Family Day, and that was an amazing event, too. I also want to say that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please get your mammograms, both men and women. Please do your self-exams. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll go ahead and go. Hi, everyone. So I'm part of the Age Friendly Coalition, and we have had a couple meetings in the past couple of weeks, and I just wanted to let you know to keep an eye out, we're going to be putting out a survey, an adult resident livability survey. And so we really want to collect information from the folks in Pacifica on housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, communication and information, social participation, all different kinds of information that we're collecting, so that when we move forward with our work plan, we'll have some data to go off of. So please look for that. We're going to be pushing it out far and wide, and we'd love it if you could share it with the community. That would be great. Phew, that was a mouthful. So the day after our last meeting, mind you, it was Fog Fest, right? And then we had the whatever happened that day. And so for starters, I just want to thank everyone for the Fog Fest. I didn't even get to talk about it that day, like, it was such an awesome event. My young people at our prevention booth collected surveys and talked to people about overdose prevention, and it was just really great. So thank you. I see you back there, Robin. I see you. Thank you so much for all your hard work. But the very next morning, I attended the Rotary Breakfast Meeting, you know, at 7:00 something, with Cindy Abbott, and we had an opportunity to talk about, which was actually really good timing, I was super still emotional from the night before, but we had an opportunity to talk about our art project. So it's Art for a More Peaceful and Just Community, and I'll just read you a little bit about it. It's a collaborative project with community organizations, schools, libraries, and government agencies to create avenues of understanding and commonality to visibly demonstrate the community stands together for kindness, compassion, and against intolerance and hate, and is committed to grow and nurture personal resilience and community support systems. And so we have a full work plan with all these different activities that are going to be going on in our community, and we're getting buy-in from all the different sectors, the Beach Coalition and the city, and all the different people who are involved with the Pacifica Collaborative. So I want to thank Cindy Abbott from the Sanchez Arts Center for her work on this project. We were able to, she was able to get some funding for it. So we're pretty excited, and I mean, the timing is everything, right? Couldn't have planned that. Okay, I also attended the HART meeting, which is Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County HART, and we had an opportunity to vote on authorizing a $3 million loan to an affordable housing site. Wait a minute, am I giving you the address? Maybe? Yes, I am. It's 678 Ralston Avenue, and it's going to be 65 units, all affordable, all different levels of affordability, so I'm really excited about that. It's really an honor to be a part of that kind of regional work, and I'll bring you more information as we move forward with that. I attended the City and County Association of Government Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting, where on the agenda was for us to review and confirm the MTC Complete Streets Checklist for the Pacifica's Manor Drive Overpassing Project for the 2024 State Transportation Improvement Program. So had an opportunity to review the checklist for the project. Here, some of the other commissioners asked really great questions. Thank you to Roland Yip, who was on the line. Unfortunately, we had some technical difficulties, so we couldn't hear him. And so he hung in there so well, Lisa, you just have to tell him how awesome he is. He hung in there and answered questions through the chat, and I did my very best to represent the project, but it was, it went really well. And so next stop is MTC, I think, or no, probably CCAG next. But anyway, very exciting, and it's because of our work on regional boards that we have the opportunity to represent our city and to make sure that our projects are heard and are spoken for. So it's really a pleasure to be able to do that. I did take a step back from the Cal City's Peninsula Division Executive Committee. I've been noticing that I say yes to a lot of things, and then some of the things on the outside don't get the attention that they deserve. And that was one of them, that people would ask me what it was, and I couldn't honestly really explain it. But I just wasn't doing a very good job. And so it feels good to know that and to just say, I think it would be better for somebody else to do this so I could pay attention to all the other million things that we're doing here. So that is, just wanted to let you all know that. Palma Palooza was awesome. Thank you to the community and for supporting our Pacifica Resource Center. It's everything to our community. I attended the Coast Pride meeting, where we are going to be talking about planning Pacifica Pride. So we have a new co-chair, Lauren Smith. And so I'm excited to get working with Lauren on Pacifica Pride. Again, Pacifica Peace People had an awesome, awesome evening talking about racism, a community dialogue about racism. It was pretty well-attended. People said, made the comment that it was preaching to the choir, that it was not a very diverse crowd. And what I had to say about that is that, me personally, I need to continue to learn all the time. So there is not a dialogue about racism that I shouldn't be a part of because there's just so much to learn. So even the choir, we all need to learn. We all have so much to learn. So anyway, thank you to the Pacifica Peace People. I attended the bid meeting, which is the business, what is it?
Improvement District.
Improvement District meeting to talk about the money that's going to be supporting our hotels. Sue Beckmeyer can probably explain that way better than me. I wanted to thank our Chief of Police, Chief Sarah Sua. Thank you so much for the beautiful display at the Pacifica Police Department Inspection Day. It was the first time I've ever seen that. It was, it was just really beautiful, and it really showed the unity within the police department, and I got to meet their families. So it was wonderful. Thank you so much, Chief. I appreciate it. And Council of Cities in Half Moon Bay, and I think that's it.
Councilmember Bowles.
You forgot one thing. Only one. We had a B-Bert meeting, too, two days after our last council meeting. So that was a repeat of the one we had in person to talk about amenities and also some different options, especially for the south end near Clarendon and connecting to the berm. But I just wanted to remind people that there were, there's still opportunities to participate in that coming up. So if you search online, Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, we have office hours with the technical consultants on October 11th and the 17th, so you can sign up for a 15-minute personal spot with them. There's a virtual survey available, and our consultant will also be at the pier this coming Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. So anybody who missed the meeting can take part and give feedback there also. I had a commute.org meeting and had the results of their transportation survey from the whole Bay, the whole San Mateo County. Planning Director Murdock and I had a separate meeting to review the data from Pacifica, and I kept thinking we wanted to start a shuttle program ourselves, right? A lot of other cities have this, to take people to Caltrans and so forth where a bus line isn't necessarily viable. And what came out of that, unfortunately, is that going to a shuttle means like several years of commitment of financial resources. And the first step to thinking about a shuttle is actually to start like a van pool that maybe is a city vehicle, you know, maybe we can get people to sign up that, so we know that there's enough sustained interest to fund such a program. So anyway, and I'm talking to them again, they are going to come and present, just waiting for a date to schedule to the council meeting because they have a lot of wonderful programs to help get people on public transportation and free passes and free rides home and so forth. So that'll be coming. I met with Bill Chang of PG&E, who's the representative for our area, and he was sharing something that the new legislation the state had passed that actually came as a surprise to PG&E, and they weren't really that much in favor of it, but it's a new rate structure for electric use. Right now, your bill is based on your use, and what the state has mandated is changing it to income. So there'll be three different tiers, and lower-income people, even if you're, I mean, it makes, it makes sense for our poor who have many people sharing one house, for example, that, you know, maybe have higher power needs and, you know, could still use a lower rate. The people who are going to be most impacted are the people with solar, who are, who have very little use and are now going to be paying much higher rates. And so I'm really concerned about what that might do to the solar market. So they, PG&E wasn't actually in favor, but the state is forcing this on them. And then the other thing is they are also pushing to try to underground some electrical lines because we know that that, those can be sources of fire starting. And they had a, an ask of the CPUC for money that included skyline area up here in Pacifica and also parts of the coast, but the CPUC doesn't seem to think it's important to fund. So those, they're just asking us to go and speak up, you know, in favor of those things. Council of Cities in Half Moon Bay was great, and I had great conversations with their council members, who are wonderful people, too. And Palma Palooza was great. The Peace People event was great. One thing I learned, I'd never seen the diagram about equality versus equity, and that was really powerful to me. Like, they had three little kids of different heights, and equality means giving them all something equal to stand up on, but then the tall kid still is not equal to the little kid, right? Who can't necessarily see over the fence. And so that's equality, but equity is actually building people up to whatever height they need to get rid of the fence, to see over the fence, or eventually, hopefully, get rid of the fence. Anyway, it's really important to think about the, the different places people are coming from in life and needing a little bit more help. So anyway, I really appreciated that event. I've started my San Mateo County Leadership Training Program, which has been terrific. We started with a two-day kind of retreat with two different groups. And then we're going to be meeting once a month on different issues, and the one last Friday was on economic development, and I was able to have some, a really good meeting with Assistant City Manager Carter and Tara Schefar, new Economic Development Director, ahead of time, just so I could be thinking about what we needed. So anyway, there's some interesting grants coming up and partnerships within the county that I'll come back and share with you later. One thing they shared in particular, you know, it's like biotech has been a, an industry that's really taken off, you know, in the last few years. What they really see taking off, coming up are climate-related jobs and electrification jobs, so, which would be wonderful, you know, industries to bring into Pacifica, too, if we can, we can find those. And then as part of that training, we each have a cap project that we're going to be, not each, we're in teams, a cap project that we're working on over 10 months. And I'm going to be working with Ray Mueller's office to look at water capture projects along the coast to build resilience. And so one of the, one of the options we're considering is fog harvesting, and it's been great to talk with Planning Director Hauser, who's been working on this, and, you know, and with Adrian Carr, Director of our Water District, and Jack was back there. I think he's gone. And then as part of that, me trying to learn more, I actually went to a different Fog Fest in Santa Cruz this weekend, which was actually put on by scientists that use these Santa Cruz that are studying fog harvesting. So I got to see a few installations and...
Tell them to come up north next year.
Yeah. Well, they're, actually, their, their most successful test site is at Malaga Ridge. So on the Water District property, and they average, so it's a one-meter-square panel, they averaged in the foggy season, one gallon of water per day and up to four, you know, on really foggy days. So anyway, there's maybe some potential there. And I had an airport roundtable meeting, and the, the interesting thing is that they're working on possible expansion of the night hush program, which are the flights that come over Pacifica. I think right now the hours are limited to like 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM. It's, and so hopefully expanding that so that the flights don't come over Pacifica and turn down the coast, but continue over the ocean before they turn. And then one last thing, the, there's an Electric Home Tour this Saturday that's put on 40, 40 projects all over San Mateo and Santa Clara County, and my house is on the tour in Pacifica, 10 to 4:00. So you can find out more at electrichometour.org or email me, and you're all welcome to come.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I'm exhausted.
Me, too.
Wow. Wow. Okay, so true confessions, I was not at Palma Palooza. So when you said you were there with everyone here, I was there in spirit, but I was not able to attend. Primarily over the last couple of weeks, I've been recovering from Fog Fest. It was, it was an amazing community event, and it took a lot of work to put it together. And I'm not quite over it yet, but looking forward to, you know, next year going equally, equally well, if not slightly more, less work. More or less work? Yeah. Anyway, a couple of meetings I had over the couple of weeks, I met for about two hours. I took Angelina Soldatos from California Apartment Association. I took her along our walk from, along Esplanade, along, so many of those apartment homes there are naturally affordable, which isn't affordable, but is more affordable. It's very hard to describe, but I wanted her to see it because she's pretty new to the organization. She'd done a lot of work with the city of Fairfax, which has similar, some of the similar issues, yeah. And she's so excited and interested to learn, and so we spent probably two hours all the way down, well, not all the way down, just to the SFRV Park. We didn't do the second half, all the way to Maury Point. That's coming next. So that was, that was great. I agree that the community dialogue about racism was very useful and beneficial. Some of the folks who are here tonight were there, and I learned, as you were saying, Councilmember Beer, learned a lot. And I, it was really poignant to me, the panel was three school board members. It was Kai Doggett and Laverne Villalobos from Pacifica School District and Rosie Tahada from Jefferson High School District. And there were three opening questions that the facilitator, I forgot her name, Nicole Anderson, asked them to comment on. And after Laverne described her, the way she identifies culturally and some history about herself and her family, Rosie said to her, "I've known you for 10 years. We've worked together for 10 years, and I feel like I'm just getting to know you." So just to echo your, your statement, Councilmember Beer, it really was an eye-opening and a learning experience that I hope we're going to be able to have more of. I want to figure out ways to make that happen. The bid meeting, Business Improvement District, it was a challenge to get that scheduled, and so the folks that were in attendance, I thank them for being there, and I thank staff for the work to get the meeting to happen. And I especially thank Ela Patel for her involvement and willingness to work with city staff on a subcommittee for outlining some options moving forward as the bid transitions from formerly being the fiscal agent overseeing and working with the bid, formerly being the Chamber of Commerce, now it's going to be the city helping the bid to identify what its next steps are going to be, what the interest is in terms of how the bid will be overseen, what it will focus on. And on, and this is all funds that are $1 per room per night from our hotels in Pacifica. And the bid's job is to, to state how they, the hotels, want those funds invested and spent to promote more hotel nights and tourism in Pacifica. So shout out to Ela for helping and, and also for her new second business venture in Pacifica, the Seabreeze Motel. Yeah. So in addition to anchor in, so that was, that was great. Looking forward to hearing more about Art for a More Peaceful and Just Community. I know that it's all coming together, and I'm really, really excited to hear more about opportunities to engage and participate. Thank you for, Councilmember Bowles, for all you're doing, number one, but especially for the update from, about CPUC and the undergrounding power lines. I didn't know that was a need for us to speak out on that, so I'll be looking into that to figure out how to get our voice. Thank you. I appreciate that because that is a big one. And, you know, I have to say to Councilmember Beer, I noticed when I was at the League of Cities meeting that you were not doing the leadership thing again this year, but thank you for doing it for the year that you were there. You stepped up and you represented the coast. You represented the city of Pacifica, and that is very important in a peninsula-focused organization. I know they want it to be, peninsula means really the coast, too, except it doesn't in the vernacular of what is a peninsula exactly. So thank you for, for doing it. And know that the leadership in place is, they're on fire. It's, you're just, it's in good hands. Yeah. So that's all. Thank you.
Well, I had a fairly divergent course over the last couple of weeks from the rest of my colleagues. As always, I want to thank Jack Brigette for having been here earlier. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, everyone. Ukraine continues to be in my heart and on my mind today. Over the last couple of days, Israel has been the big newsmaker. I had a lovely email exchange with one of our community members who's of Palestinian descent, and we both commiserated how much it sucks is the bottom line. You know, I feel like that is kind of a bottom line for me is between our Jewish members of the community and our Palestinian members of the community, of which there are many. We get to enjoy being here together as a community in a peaceful place, and what's going on in Israel is heartbreaking. From over here, I look over there, and part of me wants to shrug, part of me wants to rant and rail. I have been there. I've seen it firsthand, and it's, it's really heart-wrenching to know what's going on right now, so. That's that. The three things that I attended properly were the PCE Board Meeting, Peninsula Clean Energy. We were hearing about the ways we were communicating with the state, especially at the Cal CCA Board Retreat and the conversations we're having with PG&E about power adequacy and undergrounding and noticing that the agenda we'd prefer them to have is not always the agenda they the agenda they have, but that they're at least communicating with us about what's going on so that we can look at what they are doing and make our decisions accordingly. The legislative issue you were talking about, Christine, that Bill Chang was telling you about, we'll be discussing that at PCE at a time to be determined, but probably sooner than later at this point. We received some updates on the EV Ready Program, some legislative updates, and the next PCE Board Meeting will be on the 26th of October. The next day, rather than going to Council of Cities, I was interviewing State Senator Josh Becker for the mayor's office. I take him when he's available. I don't know if you've ever tried to schedule a state legislator. It's not the easiest thing. I have interviews coming up with Mark Berman. And also, because of the last events from the meeting two Mondays ago, I decided to reach out to some colleagues from across the region. So I'll be having Andrew Fung from Millbrae on the show, who was attacked because of anti-Asian. I'll have Mark Nagalis of South City on the show to talk about some of the hate speech that's been going on in South City and how they've been dealing with it. And a third member to be determined. I'll be reaching out to Maurice Goodman and Glenn Sylvester to come on and give us perspective also. So one of my answers to what we've been experiencing is to bring regional leadership in to talk about it in that forum. So stay tuned. The interview with Josh Becker will be airing this Friday night, the 13th, at eight thirty on PCT 26. You'll also be able to find it on YouTube. I was happy to attend Palma Palooza with my colleagues, minus Councilmember Beckmeyer, who was very busy attending to other things. Otherwise, you would have been there. It was good to see our county supervisor, Ray Mueller, there. It was also good to see in attendance Assembly Member Mark Berman. For years while I was on the Board of PRC, I really hankered to get the actual lawmaker to the event rather than a staffer. And while it's always good to have a staffer representing the office, it really meant something to have the Assembly Member there. So thank you, Mark Berman, for being in attendance. After that, I had scheduled with my family, my girlfriend and her daughter, a trip to Disneyland. And so that's what took up the next four days of my life until seeing my family thereafter. After what happened Monday, the 25th, I'll tell you, I needed, it's a small world, like there was no tomorrow. And I did not know that until I stepped foot on that little boat. One thing I had never done while I was at Disneyland was Great Moments in American History with President Lincoln. So seeing that animatronic experience was more extraordinary than I imagined. I was really impressed by it. But the other thing that did my heart a lot of good after that horrible meeting we all got to experience together was the speech he gave. And while I won't recite the entire thing, there were a couple of the paragraphs I did want to highlight because I found it helpful. At what point shall we expect the approach of danger? By what means shall we fortify against it? Shall we expect some transatlantic military giant to step the ocean and crush us at a blow? Never. All the armies of Europe, Asia, and Africa combined could not by force take a drink from the Ohio or make a track on the Blue Ridge in a trial of a thousand years. At what point, then, is the approach of danger to be expected? I answer, if it ever reach us, it must spring amongst us. It cannot come from abroad. If destruction be our lot, we be author and finisher. As a nation of free people, we must live through all times or die by suicide. And the speech closes by saying, neither let us be slandered from our duty by false accusations against us, nor frightened from it by menaces of destruction to the government, nor of dungeons to ourselves. Let us have faith that right makes might. And in that faith, let us to the end dare to do our duty as we understand it. The speech in its entirety was actually rather uplifting. I think it's an amalgamation of his speeches, but it was helpful for me in that moment. And so it was good to reconnect with my family on every conceivable level and come back to get to work. And that has been my couple of weeks. Which brings us to staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I just have two brief communications. As mentioned earlier, I wanted to mention the Monday Night Joint Study Session on the Housing Element, seven o'clock there, I should say there or here in the council chambers. So looking forward to that step. Also, last week, I had the opportunity, as did Assistant City Manager Julia Carter, to attend the International City and County Management Association Annual Conference, where more than 5,000 city management professionals gather together. And it was a great conference, lots of great keynote speakers, as well as breakout sessions covering topics like strategic leadership, storytelling to advance priorities, multi-generational workplaces, connectional intelligence, ethics, community engagement, and of course, personal and professional resilience. So it was a very worthwhile gathering, learned a lot. That completes my communications.
Thank you so much. We have no public hearings. Our first consideration item, a resolution to approve a one-time donation to Cora, which is Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, and amend the fiscal year 2023-24 budget to appropriate the funds. Proposed action is to, one, adopt the attached resolution to approve a one-time donation of $10,000 to Cora for Speak Up, which is a countywide education and training pilot program, which would take place in the city of Pacifica, and amend the fiscal year 2023-24 general fund budget to appropriate the funds. And two, to direct the city manager to develop a process for city council annual consideration of nonprofit donations during the annual budget development process, and return to city council to consider the process in late winter, early spring 2024, prior to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget development. Shall we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, sure. Mayor Big Stick, Kevin Woodhouse, again, I can kick this one off. And then we are going to hear a presentation about the Cora Speak Out program here from the representative from Cora from the chambers. But all I'll briefly introduce is that because this mid-year request for this this $10,000, kind of like a grant or a donation, but it's purchasing a service that Cora will bring to the community, that coming sort of mid-fiscal year is fairly unique for council to consider. And it raised the importance of discussing the second part of the recommendation, which is that how annually, and because this has come up before during budget deliberations or other times in mid-year, what kind of a consistent process should the council undertake to consider donations to other non-governmental organizations or agencies? And so that's the importance of the second part, not to discuss that in detail, but just to get approval from the council that we'll go off and bring back some recommendations for council early in the budget year. So I just wanted to explain that. And then without further ado, turn it over to for the Cora presentation.
Hi, Lynn Shute again from Cora. And I want to draw your attention to the 24-hour hotline number there at the bottom of the screen, 1-800-300-1080. We are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We are Samateo County's, oh, let's see, there we go, Samateo County's only organization providing comprehensive domestic violence crisis and prevention services. So we've been doing that since November 22, 1977, or at least that's the official date. We were doing that before then. We provide an array of services. Let's see, I'm not sure if I'm clicking correctly. Oh, there we go. I like to describe it as providing everything from hotline to housing. The 24-hour hotline is available to any resident of the county 24 hours a day. We have an emergency response program, which is in partnership with our local law enforcement. And what that means is when law enforcement is going to the scene of a 911 call for domestic violence, they do connect that client to Cora's resources so that they have what they need to get back on the right track. Housing and advocacy is something that's really necessary for a lot of our clients because you imagine they can't stay there anymore. They have to leave. And in a lot of cases, these survivors have been estranged from the rest of their family. So it's not like they can go live with Aunt Mabel or, you know, Uncle Tom. It's going to be somebody that's pretty separated from their family as well. I want to in particular thank our Pacifica Realtors who are providing housing. They're connecting our clients to different apartments and houses and ADUs throughout the county and in Pacifica in particular. So I thought that was important for you all to know that's happening. And I think Pacifica's Realtors were among the first when we went out to the community and asked for help. Our family-centered mental health services are provided for the very little kids as well as the adults. We have a special way of working with the kids that is a proven practice that helps to rewire the brain so that they are able to recover from trauma. For those of you who want to Google it, it's called EMDR. I can't remember all of the acronym, but EMDR is a way that we work with the littlest ones. And our legal services, being able to help that survivor who's fleeing with an emergency protective order, helping them to go to court. It's really hard to go to court and look at the person who caused you harm across the room. So having our advocates there who are a mixture of staff and volunteers, great volunteers from the community, I might add, to hold your hand and be there with you, fabulous. And the community education and prevention work that we do has been long a staple of Cora's services. So altogether, we're looking at providing a number of individuals, in this case, 6,742 in the year, calendar year 2022, with different services to help bridge that gap from risk to resiliency. I'm thinking I don't need to tell you about the five murders in this county, but I will anyway. For those who may not know, Samateo County rarely has murders. And this year, we've had five in this calendar year so far. All of the five have been due to domestic violence. Two of them have been as a result of guns being in the picture. The latest one was in South San Francisco, sorry, Daly City. So, you know, it's really distressing and we're hoping to really turn the tide on that because we know that providing these types of services will help combat the costs of and the impacts of interpersonal abuse. There are medical and healthcare costs, lost productivity, loss of employment, housing instability, child welfare and educational impact, and decreased property value in local economy. And it's the most dangerous call for our police to respond to. So what are we doing about it? We have Speak Up. Speak Up is here, it was developed by the city of San Carlos and our CEO, Dr. Karen Ferguson, as a response to the heinous murder that occurred last September on the street in broad daylight in front of the community. And San Carlos City Council said, what can we do? We can't let this go without something positive coming out of it. So out of that work that the city council members and our CEO did, came Speak Up. Because what we know is that if we could provide people with a tool to understand what intimate partner abuse is, and share with them some of the red flags that so that they can recognize when it's happening, and then provide support in terms of telling them what to say, what not to say, when they encounter somebody that they believe may be at risk or actually experiencing abuse, then we know that we're going to reduce these numbers, the one in three women, the one in four men, the one in two transgender folks. And how we're doing that is by going out to the local businesses and talking to them and giving them a 15-minute speech that covers those three points that I just highlighted. And they represent all areas of business, from retail to fitness to dental offices. When you go to your dentist, they now have to check your neck to see if you have cancer. Well, that's one place where somebody can see whether you've been strangled. And we're letting dentists know that and letting them know what they can do when they encounter somebody who hasn't experienced that. Thank you, whoever's clicking it. So so far, we've talked to over 165 companies and organizations and community groups in San Carlos for Speak Up. And when we go talk to them, we provide them with a QR sticker that they could put in their bathroom. So let's say a customer goes into the bathroom, they see the Cora sticker, they could just take a picture of it with their phone and they have right in their fingertips there information about Cora. We're also giving the different businesses QR cards that they can hand to their customers if they suspect something is happening, which again, provides information about Cora. And then providing those 15-minute presentations that cover those three modules. After doing that, 92% of the folks that we provide this training for say they know how to recognize and respond after having this training, which is pretty important because prior to this, you know, a lot of people were saying to us before the training, I would love to help, but I don't know what to say. And after having the training, they say, I've got it. I know some things that I can do now. So by December 31st, we will have had 270 to 300 touches in in San Carlos and 60 presentations. So a lot of people on the community converting from bystanders to upstanders, which is fabulous. This is important because multiple studies have proven that public awareness campaigns work. And so when we're increasing the capacity of our community to assist, we're going to save lives. So thank you. I believe that together, we could turn the tide on the incidence of interpersonal abuse. And Speak Up is definitely helping us move in that right direction.
Thank you so much. So if there's no further from staff, council, do we have questions? And if we have no questions, let's go to public comment. I don't have any yellow cards. I don't know if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this. If not, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation or other questions.
I'd like to just comment, council knows because we were all there. I think we were all there that night. We weren't all there. We were almost all there. See? See what I mean? At least one Sioux was there. So what the Souzes were represented. We heard about the Speak Up program at the Council of Cities Dinner four months ago, I'm guessing, three months ago, something like that. I'm guessing, three months ago, something like that. I know. And it was really very beneficial. And I think, I was thinking of saying that same thing about Pacifica's use of services. And I wanted to say about that, something that the director, I forgot her name right now, pointed out in her presentation, it doesn't mean your community has more incidence of partner violence, it means your community is utilizing the resources that are available. And that really meant a lot to me. Because we don't have the, what is that thing you guys heard about Friday night? Cares van, right? I mean, I think we could if we needed it in a moment of desperation, but it's as a regular service, it's part of the sheriff's details, right? So knowing that we had this safety net and knowing that we've been participating with Cora, hearing about Speak Up, it was very inspirational to me. And to hear, you know, I just looked at our TRIB last week, there were two mentions of PPD action. There are actually cases in court now from things our Pacifica Police Department arrests they made in 2001 and, I mean, 2021 and 2022. And so, I mean, it's just one of those things where the more you learn, the more you realize it's everywhere and happening all the time. And so, learning more, I think, will be beneficial for our community. I certainly want to join with the other communities in the county that are doing this work with Speak Up. And I was so excited about it that I jumped into a Zoom one day that the mayor and Mary were attending in person, and then all of a sudden, it was like, oh, there's three of you here. I went, oh, oh, I thought it was a general informational meeting, I didn't realize, goodbye! And hung up right away, just to let them carry that ball. So thank you for carrying it. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this, just, and one thing, it says in the staff report, they call it a one-time donation, but it's actually bringing a service to our community, and a really important one. And the amount of touches and interactions that Cora's going to be able to have with our, with our communities can be really important just to get that general information out because folks don't know what to look for. And if you're going to get your haircut and you're talking with your hairdresser, you know, they'll be able to like, recognize the signs and then be able to share information. And that's like gold. And we really will benefit from it. So I'm all for it, I'm excited about it. I'm actually excited about the number two discussion too, so that's me.
Just ditto, I'm so grateful for the organization and $10,000 seems like a drop in the bucket for all the education they're going to provide to the community so that we can use their services even better here and try to stop some of this behavior early before it gets more violent because that's often where more violent crimes happen, is starting with domestic abuse issues. So, yeah, totally for it. And thanks, staff, for finding a way to fund things mid-year as well.
It was wonderful having the opportunity through Council of Cities to see Cora, first of all, and that was the gateway to this opportunity. At the meeting, while this was being presented, I know that we had had a conversation earlier about processes relating to distribution of funds to nonprofits, and so that was going through my head while the presentation was happening. And through conversation amongst our regional colleagues, a thought occurred to me, well, while we don't have a proper process in place for how we consider nonprofits, it might be an interesting approach to see if there's community buy-in from other organizations in town. And so I will be putting a more formal application in through Lyons, through Rotary, through Pacificans Care, through the Freemasons. I've already gotten a commitment of $1,000 through the Pacifica Resource Center. So there's absolutely community buy-in on top of what really doesn't seem like a high-dollar amount for the city, but stewardship of funds is a thing and how we process things is a thing. And dancing around that, what I've come to discover is the interest in community buy-in, which frankly, I think makes this even more of a cool thing that we're engaging in. So that's that piece. It sounds like we have consensus that we want to go that route. Do you want us to adopt the resolution, make the motion before we discuss the direction around nonprofits, or should we give that direction first and then make the motion?
You can do it either way.
Okay.
Either way, whatever the council's preference is, but we do need a motion, a formal motion on the resolution.
Right.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution to approve a one-time donation of $10,000 to Cora for Speak Up, a county-wide education and training pilot program in the city of Pacifica to amend the FY 2023-24 general fund budget to appropriate the funds.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
And the motion made by Councilmember Beer, seconded by Mayor Proton Vardarlos, passes unanimously.
So this is the second time within several months that conversations around how we distribute funds to nonprofits has come up. I absolutely think it's a good idea to direct city manager to come up with policy. What I will say is this was unexpected after the fact of our budget process, and I think that it would be good to include wiggle room for whatever policy we have, that as things arise, we have some amount of wiggle room. This was really kind of sprang up organically as a regional opportunity. And if such an event were to occur down the road, I'd want to make sure that there's some ability to incorporate that into our process.
Yeah, no, I think it's really important, and I know with other cities, they have a process where different groups can apply for different fundings. It's not like we have a ton of money, but you know, there should be a process in place. But I will ask us to think about it for maybe our next conversation, is about the Pacifica Resource Center being outside of that, like maybe as a line item or something, but I'm sure that's for future conversations.
I support having the city manager and staff develop this idea, flesh it out, bring it back to us for approval. I appreciate your comment about the unforeseen. Sometimes that's just important, and I appreciate your leadership bringing this forward, this particular item. We've certainly brought up Pride and other instances since the budget approval cycle. So I think the timing that's recommended here makes a lot of sense, assuming, I mean, city manager wouldn't have said it if they couldn't do it, but to have the process brought back to us in late winter, early spring of '24, and then prior to the '24-'25 budget development cycle.
I'm in agreement with that too. Is there anything you need specifically from us, city manager Woodhouse, at this point? Or?
No, just the direction that we're going to go off and develop, you know, a policy or alternatives and bring that back for council discussion in the future.
Mayor Proton, anything to add? Okay, sounds like we have consensus. Do you have the direction you need? Very good. Do we need a break before going into number 10? I'm inclined to go ahead if not. Okay, let's, let's take a 10-minute recess then.
Oh, there's chips.
There are chips. We'll reconvene at 10 o'clock. 10:03, welcome back to the regular session of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, Monday, October 9th. We are up to our final agenda item, consideration item number 10. Update regarding Local Coastal Land Use Plan, or LCLUP, certification process and incorporating 2040 general plan consistency revisions into the existing certification draft LCLUP and approving a revised certification draft LCLUP to transmit to the California Coastal Commission. Proposed action, adopt the attached resolution. One, certifying that the revised certification draft LCLUP is intended to be carried out in a manner fully and conformity with the California Coastal Act. Two, directing the city manager to incorporate 2040 general plan consistency revisions into the existing certification draft LCLUP. Two, form the revised certification draft LCLUP and adopting the revised certification draft LCLUP. Three, approving transmittal of the revised certification draft LCLUP to the California Coastal Commission, or CCC, for certification. And four, finding that approval of the revised certification draft LCLUP is exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act, or CEQA, and provide direction on a community engagement plan to update the public on the status of Pacifica's efforts to obtain CCC certification of the LCLUP. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Planning Director Christian Murdock, and I'm here this evening with Senior Planner Stephanie Cervantes. We're here to provide the council and the community with an update on the ongoing process to obtain certification of the city's Local Coastal Land Use Plan, or LCLUP, by the California Coastal Commission. The process to update the LCLUP is one of the key activities of Plan Pacifica, conceived in 2019 as a three-part undertaking, including reinvigorated efforts to update the general plan and LCLUP, and adopt a new Sharp Park specific plan. The Plan Pacifica, Plan Pacifica recently also added the Housing Element Update and Climate Action and Adaptation Plan as additional ongoing planning efforts. The city has made significant progress on the three original parts of the Plan Pacifica process. The city council adopted the general plan update in July of 2022. The city council adopted the LCLUP update in February of 2020. And the city council adopted the Sharp Park specific plan in August of 2022. Both the LCLUP and Sharp Park specific plan require certification by the California Coastal Commission, or CCC, before they can take effect in the coastal zone. Work on the LCLUP started more than a decade ago, kicking off in 2009 in parallel with the general plan update process. The work progressed in periodic bursts, with some notable periods of work in 2017 and '18 to address sea level rise adaptation and vulnerability planning, and in 2019 through adoption in 2020. Since adoption by city council in February 2020 and transmittal to the CCC in June of 2020, other key milestones have also occurred, many of which are summarized on the slide. After three years of information exchanges with the CCC, the LCLUP update was accepted for filing by the CCC in August of 2022, starting the statutory timeline for CCC action. The law allows 90 working days for certification of a local coastal program, or LCP amendment, which includes applications such as the city's to update the LCLUP. The CCC granted itself an additional 12 months to complete its work in December of 2022, which established a new statutory deadline for CCC action of December 2023. As also shown in the timeline on the preceding slide, the city council adopted the general plan update in July of 2022. The adoption occurred more than two years after the LCLUP update adoption and followed a significant public engagement process in its own right that led to various text changes that caused the general plan to deviate in some ways from the LCLUP adopted two years earlier. These included specific texts that led to some inconsistencies between the general plan and LCLUP. These changes were mostly minor, including updates to statistics and clarifications to the intent of some policies. However, while mostly minor, these inconsistencies could be problematic for future decision-making, such as when making findings on development projects. To avoid problems during future decision-making, the general plan and LCLUP should be brought into close alignment to achieve consistency. The city manager recommends a revision to the LCLUP adopted by city council in February of 2020 to incorporate necessary amendments to achieve consistency with the general plan. This approach would be most efficient in terms of staff time and overall processing time, and would result in an LCLUP that is consistent with the general plan, once certified by the CCC. And importantly, the CCC staff supports this approach, as indicated in a comment letter submitted last Friday and presented to city council and the public. Otherwise, a new LCP amendment application would be required following final CCC action on the city's current application. Achieving consistency with the general plan is important in its own right. However, the approach recommended by the city manager would have additional benefits. These include elimination of the December 2023 deadline for CCC action, which in turn provides additional time for a community process to discuss the suggested modifications from CCC staff released in March 2023, and discussion of other potential approaches to address key policy differences that currently exist between the city and CCC. This approach would also best support the city's goal of achieving certification of the LCLUP, which staff estimates would occur by June of 2024. As described in the staff report, an action other than that recommended by the city manager would potentially, if not almost certainly, result in the CCC taking final action on the LCLUP in December of this year to certify the LCLUP with those March 2023 suggested modifications from CCC staff. Staff does not believe the city council would be likely to adopt the LCLUP with those modifications included, which would mean the end result of the city's many years of work on this important activity would end without a certified LCLUP being in place. A key component of the city manager's recommendation to submit a revised LCLUP is a community engagement process to restart community and council discussions of this important planning document. Staff recommends a three-meeting process that would involve first introducing the March 2023 suggested modifications from CCC staff in a city council study session format. The second meeting would be a community meeting format with roundtable discussions to introduce potential alternative modifications to the CCC staff's March 2023 suggested modifications. These alternative modifications could include potentially different approaches that city staff has been discussing with CCC staff over the course of the summer. Finally, the third meeting would be a city council consideration item to discuss whether to send a comment letter to the CCC requesting the alternative modifications as part of the CCC's final consideration and certification of the LCLUP. It's important to recognize also that following final action by the CCC, the public would have additional opportunities for input during at least one public hearing each at the Planning Commission and City Council, where each body will consider whether to formally adopt the LCLUP as certified by the Coastal Commission. The city manager recommends adopting the attached resolution to take steps detailed in the staff report, which include, among other things, incorporating revisions into the LCLUP to incorporate 2040 general plan consistency revisions, and to transmit the revised certification draft LCLUP to the CCC for certification. revised certification draft LCLUP to the CCC for certification, as well as to provide direction on the proposed community engagement plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Thank you, Christian. I just have one question about, well, for now, anyway, about the community engagement. Would the first meeting be with planning?
As conceived, it would be a city council.
Okay. But is planning, when will planning have an opportunity to work on this, or will they?
So, the process as we're conceiving it is really a council-driven process, because as the ultimate decision-makers, we're really talking about additional steps beyond what the city council's already finally approved. And so, that's why we structured the process in this way. Assuming that the process plays out as the staff has recommended, the Planning Commission would then hear the LCLUP again, following Coastal Commission final action, and have an opportunity for public input at that time.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly, that the California Coastal Commission concurs with the staff recommendation.
That's correct, and that letter unfortunately was not received prior to Agenda Packet publication, but it did come in, and we did include it in the public comments submitted prior to tonight's meeting.
Councilmember Bowles.
Yeah, I have a few general questions. So, currently, the deadline for the process, as you mentioned, was December 22nd, 23. So if we pull it and resubmit, is there a hard deadline to adopt a new LCLUP?
So, if I understand the question, I think you're asking in terms of acceptance for filing and processing time by the Coastal Commission. Is that the nature of your question? There is not. What I can tell you, in staff-to-staff discussions with the appropriate leadership of the North Central District Office, which is who we interface with, they've committed to timely review and processing of the application. They understand that the nature of this application is not changing. We're incorporating textual edits to achieve alignment with the general plan, and they're not anticipating any significant filing comments of the type that dragged out the process, if you will, for multiple years previously. That's why we feel confident about an estimated final action by the Coastal Commission no later than June of 2024.
Okay, but if there ends up being some back and forth, if there isn't a hard deadline of June, is what I'm saying, like, like, right now, there's a hard deadline of December, but they don't, they haven't given us a hard deadline to complete this process, if it ends up needing a little more back and forth.
That's correct, and there's no way that they could, other than their best professional judgment, that there will be a timely acceptance for filing and scheduling for hearing thereafter.
Yeah, and to Mary's point, I find myself reading this document last night in the red lines, thinking, I wonder if the Planning Commission should review this, because, like, I don't necessarily remember all the general plan changes and so forth, too. Yeah, if there's, if there's some way to be able to include them in some earlier meetings, I think that could be helpful. Let's see, what else do I want to ask? I was confused about the third step in your process. So, we're going to have a study session here, where you will explain, you know, all the changes that the Coastal Commission is requesting, and what we haven't yet come to terms with, staff-to-staff, and then we'll have a public discussion opportunity of those things. But then the third thing was a letter to the Coastal Commission, and not, so, it's not that we're working on revisions to the LCLUP ourselves, is that, is that correct? We're just working on a letter to transmit what?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Bowles. And I think you're referring to the meeting number three on Packet Page 183 for any of the public that's trying to follow along. And so, you're correct. What staff is recommending and articulating is that we would prepare a draft comment letter for the city council to consider and to revise as appropriate, to transmit to the Coastal Commission. All of the mechanics and administrative processes of revising the red lines and resubmitting and so forth, if you can try to set those aside for a second, and just think, big picture where we are in the process. We filed our LCLUP amendment, went through years of back and forth with the Coastal Commission, and they released their staff recommendations in March of 2023, which were scheduled to proceed to hearing.
Right.
And so, if you think about those steps required to get to public hearing, if we had proceeded as planned, you can imagine the city council having submitted comments, potentially, on the staff's recommendations from the Coastal Commission. It's that same process, where we would be saying, we, you know, appreciate your staff's recommendations, but in further discussions with them, we're going to suggest different modifications than those that you've proposed. So the Coastal Commission itself would have those comments from the city, as well as their own staff's analysis, to consider. Ideally, the Coastal Commission staff would concur with our recommendations, and that's really the thrust of this process, to allow time for our community and additional conversations with Coastal Commission staff, to reach some sort of compromise or balanced approach between their suggested modifications and the city's original LCLUP. All of that goes through the Coastal Commission process, the hearing, final Coastal Commission action, then it comes back to the city. We'll have six months, as the city, to finally adopt, through Planning Commission and City Council, that final Coastal Commission-certified document. The alternative process we could undertake would take much more time than submitting the comment letter and then taking final action after the Coastal Commission. And so that's why staff's outlined this particular process.
I guess I'm still a little confused, like, so we, so we won't have an opportunity to review this document in detail, again, line by line, the way you've presented it to us tonight, until after we've sent the letter, the Coastal Commission reviews it again, and after they say it's okay? Is that, right, so, are there other opportunities for us to modify this document between now and then, I guess, is my...
Well, I think the answer is yes. I would ask you to not focus too much on the red line version, because this is incorporating policy that the city council and Planning Commission has already extensively poured over through the general plan update process, to achieve alignment with the LCLUP that came through that same process two years earlier. So this isn't intended to be any sort of substantive or policy action tonight by directing this red line change. What the council will have the opportunity to do is to suggest modifications to the Coastal Commission staff's recommendations through this process, culminating with the meeting number three. Now, if the city council wants some other LCLUP update process, that's not accounted for in this process. This process is getting the 2020 city council approval to the finish line. It is not a new LCLUP process. It's intended to address the Coastal Commission staff's suggested modifications and find a third way to try to get Coastal Commission certification.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I'm having a little trouble with that, because I wasn't involved in the process before, and I'm trying to dig in and understand it now, and there might be some other changes that I might want to suggest, you know, as we went through the process, that, you know, some of which may relate to their comments, and some of which aren't necessarily. The other thing I'm trying to understand, and I haven't gone back and read the original document in detail, but one of the things I understand happened, and this is from someone who is a coastal scientist who was deeply involved in the process, is that when the draft was written, it was obviously a very contentious process, and we, we presented a document that talked about sea level rise in terms of triggers, and that took out some of the triggering language that a lot of the community objects to, and that that was a strong compromise, and that in those letters back and forth, the Coastal Commission has said, we're fine with triggers, but you haven't given us enough information, and so we would need to flesh that out more, and that that hasn't been given to them. And so, in their processing and letter that they've just issued, they've said, okay, well, if you're, the way I understand it, and I might be wrong, is that, well, if you're not going to give us what we need for triggers, we'll take that out, and this document instead is, this is the bare minimum we need to be able to certify this document, you know, with the Coastal Act. But that may be a shift from actually what the council direction was earlier, because we haven't had that conversation. So this is where I really want to dig in and understand the policies more at some point in the process.
Sure. I think to your specific point, that understanding and digging into the details would begin with the meeting number one process, by looking at the suggested modifications from the Coastal Commission staff. We're not prepared, and I would not recommend getting into more details tonight, but I will say, one of the suggested modifications addresses just the point that you're describing, the particular sub-area triggers for adaptation and subsequent policy changes. They've suggested a different approach, you know, largely along the lines of what you described, and so, we will have an opportunity concluding, you know, with the meeting number three comment letter, perhaps to suggest something different, like, hey, put it back in, or let's propose, you know, something different, and explaining our reasons for that. So, this process would allow the discussion of those types of subject matter that the Coastal Commission has commented on, but it wouldn't really allow for the city council to get into entirely new subject matter, to change what was submitted in June of 2020. That's not what this process is, and that would be a different process directed by council.
So, and if I could just, you know, try to clarify what I hear, you know, Planning Director Murdock, you know, explaining, essentially, the way to look at it, the process where we are to date has been that we have taken our direction from council. Granted, it was a prior council, not the current council makeup, but that prior council, years ago, gave us direction on how to submit the LCP. If this council, which is a new council, decides to change that prior direction, then we, as staff, need that direction from a majority of the council members through another meeting, I mean, that really isn't, as Planning Director Murdock mentioned, it's not really teed up correctly for discussion tonight, but if that is the direction from a majority of the council, right, one council member can't make that request, but if the majority of the council decides that they want to introduce a new process into this past and current LCP process, the full council can do that, or a majority of the council members can do that. But staff has not been put in a position where we can unilaterally, oh, and I apologize, perhaps the city manager wants to add, or correct what I'm saying, but, you know, I just want the council to understand, it's not that your desires can't be met, it's procedurally, the way to make that happen is to get a concurrence from a majority of the council, that they want to change the process that has already been instituted since, I can't remember the...
2020.
2020. And I know the city manager...
Thanks, City Attorney Kenyon, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I just want to be very clear to the city council that I am not recommending restarting the LCLUP process at this point in time.
And I'm not asking for that either, I just, I don't really have a sense of what we can alter at this point, and, you know, where we are, and I guess we'll learn more later about what's needed.
Yeah, Councilmember Bowles, I would just suggest trying to frame your thinking along the lines of what the suggested modifications were from the Coastal Commission, and thinking about ultimately the city council transmitting a comment letter related to those Coastal Commission comments, so, within the purview of what those suggested modifications were, it's probably fair game for discussion. Outside of that, as mentioned, the process is not, not structured to accommodate that currently.
Councilmember Beckmeyer, did you want to add?
I just wanted to ask if, if we're looking at Packet Page 183, Director Murdock, if you can describe the meeting, the three-meeting strategy that's laid out here, in light of Councilmember Bowles' questions, I know they're big, but she did mention triggers as an example, that was a big one. What I want to know, and maybe you can help to elucidate, is, will these, this three-meeting process allow for a discussion about those trigger, you know, that particular item as an example, because of the differences in the red line versus, you know, where we're going, moving forward?
Sure. So, the red line tonight that we're recommending constitute a revised application doesn't get into the suggested modifications of the Coastal Commission for March of 2023.
Right.
The first opportunity for the council to delve into that would be meeting number one, where we're going to brief you and summarize those, you know, 100-plus suggested modifications covering a broad range of subject matter and policies, some of which, you know, there have been heartfelt testimonials about from various members of our community throughout the process. We would ask you to think about changes to those in the context of, we had the city council way from February 2020, we've got the Coastal Commission staff way that they want it done from March of 2023, and is there a third way that could be, you know, quote-unquote "compromise" approach, or some sort of way to bypass the difference between our agencies that would form a future comment through the meeting number three process? So, we can talk, you know, as much as you would like about triggers, for example, given that's one of the policies that the Coastal Commission suggested modifications would change. And can we think about, did we have it right, and let's dig in? Did we, you know, have it wrong? Or can we think of some other way to do it that we can suggest as a comment back to the Coastal Commission, essentially?
Does that make sense? Yeah. But we're still not, like, writing this policy or anything, we're just saying, we're just giving a letter. I guess that's...
Well, if you've seen these letters, they're pretty detailed. I mean, it's, it sounds, I know, a letter sounds like a comment letter, like, a one-pager or something. I mean, these are really detailed, specifically, I think, coming from what we discuss in meetings one and two. So, it'll be the opportunity for the council and the community to dive into what the differences are from what the commission submitted, the commission staff submitted to the commission in March of 23, right? And where they're very widely, and where they're kind of close, and I think that's a good process, personally.
Especially if, as a result of that letter, when the time comes to be heard, their staff is able to say, well, vis-à-vis this letter, we have, through our collaboration, found a way past our differences to find something that could work for all parties involved, that would be very powerful.
That's my hope. Okay, I think I understand, and so, so the intent of the letter is really to give you the negotiating power to keep working on these things. It's not like you have, you know, an exact plan forward, right, but it's giving you direction.
That's right, and the comment letter should be as specific as it needs to be to address the policy difference, and so it could, in some cases, involve alternative, you know, strike-through and underline text suggestions. In other cases, it could just be a clear reorientation of a policy that staff then hammers out with the Coastal Commission staff for their final recommendation ahead of the adoption hearing, which then comes back through for the city council and Planning Commission's confirmation post-Coastal Commission certification. So, there's not a one-size-fits-all, because the breadth and variety of the policy language and topics in the LCLUP are very broad as well, and varied, and so, we're going to have to try to tailor and calibrate the approach, you know, to meet the particular policy substance.
And then, when it comes back to us for approval, I mean, is there, if we find something that we still want to redline, I mean, is there an opportunity for that process to continue, hopefully, shortly, you know, hopefully, it's not very much that needs to be addressed, but...
Yes and no.
We're not just rubber-stamping what you all have worked on in detail, right?
Right. I would say the opportunities to continue to make changes diminish later and later in this process, and they're fewer and fewer, particularly after the Coastal Commission certification action. So, could some very minor changes be made? I think so, but whatever the city council finally adopts goes back yet again to the Coastal Commission for their executive director's determination that the city actually adopted what the Coastal Commission approved. So if there's great deviation, they may reject that, and we may be back to square one, having to file other LCP amendment. So that's why we should do our best to get it as... So that's why we should do our best to get it as good as we can through this process that we've outlined, and recognize, as with so many plans, it doesn't have to be the perfect last plan ever drafted. If we get most of the way there and it's pretty good, and good enough to replace the 1980 LCLUP, let's prioritize when and where we come back through for another LCP process, given all of the city's, you know, competing challenges and needs.
Councilmember Beer, did you want to jump in?
I think I'll wait, sorry.
No worries.
So the process tonight, there's a lot of red lines here, I mean, I didn't start reading it until about nine o'clock last night, and I've got three pages of questions, and I don't know that we really want to do all that today, if this is just a draft and it's not really that important. Can you speak to that? I mean, I-
It's important, but this is all policy language that's been thoroughly vetted through the general plan update process, that we're simply aligning into the LCLUP for consistency between the two documents. So there's no new policy language here that hasn't been thoroughly vetted by the community and the city council. Whether everyone will agree with it, you know, that's not what this process is, that process already occurred through the general plan update process, for example. That said, this isn't the final opportunity the council will have to say yes or no to whether this finally, you know, let me rephrase that, this isn't the last opportunity for the council to say yes or no, we agree that this today is the best language for Pacifica. What this does is gives us more time to complete the LCLUP process and result with an LCLUP certified by the Coastal Commission that's consistent with the general plan, which has a lot of value to us as a community. Inconsistencies will kill us over time, trying to reconcile them and, you know, square a circle as we're going through permit findings and so forth.
Councilmember Beer, are you still?
No, let's take public comment.
Yeah.
So, I have cards from Sam Cassius, Cliff Lawrence, and Larry Bothan. We're opening public comment, and City Attorney, did you-
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. So opening public comment, Sam Cassius is up.
Good evening, City Council. If I get this straight, guess I'm agreeing with city staff to finally be allowed to actually negotiate with the California Coastal Commission staff to find a resolution for Pacifica's LCLUP. On multiple occasions, Coastal Commission staff has requested additional data due to extreme changes to the 1980 LCP, including the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site and the quarry from the city of Pacifica. Instead of actually working with Coastal Commission staff, the city spent the last three years repeatedly ignoring overtures from the Coastal Commission. Additionally, due to frustration with the city's unwillingness to come to a resolution and to counter the city's misinformation campaign on the Coastal Commission staff willingness to negotiate and blaming the Coastal Commission for the delay in the approval of the LCP, Coastal Commission staff made modifications to Pacifica's LCLUP for a hearing before the Coastal Commission commissioners on March 8th. The city then quickly reversed course to ask for an extension until the end of the year and signaled to the CCC, to the Coastal Commission commissioners, that they would work with Coastal Commission staff for resolution. Instead of cooperation, the city chose to start a negative campaign with the collaboration of outside realtor, real estate and developer lobbyists to vilify the Coastal Commission for doing what they are mandated to do from the people of California, enforcing the Coastal Act's constitutional law mandate. And now, in October, eight months after requesting time to negotiate with the Coastal Commission staff, city staffers requesting permission for what you all told us you were already doing since the delayed hearing in March, if I hear this correct. A lot of citizens and community organizations have repeatedly presented multiple hazard environmental restraining data for these undeveloped sites, which include flooding with a formation of an annual lake in Pedro Point, sea level rise, liquefaction, tsunami, federally designated wetlands, as well as ESHA, and protected species habitat, and not even to talk about other state guidance, including SB 379. And they continue to attempt to change these properties designations to residential plan development, where all scientific data dictates they should be designated conservation. Even more egregious, the city now is downplaying the dangers of global warming and downgraded sea level rise risk to one to two feet by 2050, where all scientific data is acknowledging that we should be planning for the extreme risk scenario, which the city is not considering. How are 25-year design life models with minimal sea level rise justifiable? Why not just make it 10 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Lawrence.
Cliff Lawrence here. This is, this boggles my mind, I have such a hard time grasping what's going on here. I got the concept, we've got to get the coastal plan to match the policies that we've already put in our new general plan. I understand that, I accept that, but here's the part that disturbs me. It still sounds like we could end up submitting two, having two plans going to the Coastal Commission, ours and the Coastal Commission staff, and then asking the Coastal Commission to sort it out. Now, if that's our plan, then what happens if we don't, they don't approve anything? What happens then? And I think in the more general sense is, what is this city's policy about its relationship with the Coastal Commission? Are we fighting them? Are we trying to work with them? Are we trying to keep them out of our business? And what exactly is our policy? And who, specifically among us, is a supporter of that policy?
Larry Bothan, followed by Suzanne Moore and Andy Naraway.
Good evening, City Council and Pacifica city staff. I'm going to make this short and sweet, I've read through the relevant revisions to the LCLUP that Pacifica staff have put together in their three-year negotiation with the California Coastal Commission. It looks like they have held firm to the public sentiments that we want to protect and preserve Sharp Park and the golf course, and with a new seawall that will accomplish that goal. It seems there's been growing resistance up and down the California coast to the commission's refusal to back down from its extreme views on managed retreat as the only acceptable response to sea level rise. The revised LCLUP strikes a blow for local control and self-determination. Absent any poison pills I might have missed, the revisions look reasonable, solid, and in keeping with public's desire to protect and enhance Sharp Park as the geographic and cultural center of Pacifica by building that new seawall. So I urge city councils to pass the resolution to adopt the LCLUP and then resubmit to the Coastal Commission, and let's hope it flies. I think staff's done a good job on this, thank you.
Thank you. Is Suzanne Moore still in the room?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to Andy Naraway, followed by Chris Redfield, which is the last card I have.
This is regarding the proposed change in zoning for the Calton Field in Pedro Point, otherwise known as the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue. I implore you to reject tonight's proposed action to adopt the resolution that states it is in conformity with the California Coastal Act. This is a lie, it is not in conformity. I seriously urge you to listen to your neighbors if you want to avoid legal confrontation and also rebuttal from the California Coastal Commission, who will not approve this as it is written. Stop wasting your time and resources and listen to the vast majority of residents who oppose this ill-advised and potentially dangerous and illegal land use change. This change, if approved, commits the city of Pacifica towards an avoidable battle against its own citizens, science, the CCC, and the rising tides of the Pacific Ocean. The Pedro Point Community Association has stated the legal and biological reasons why the proposed land use designation change in the coastal wetlands adjacent to San Pedro Avenue from visitor-serving commercial uses to residential mixed-use designation conflicts with the Coastal Act. The current baseline in the field has no development with this longstanding environmental baseline. The closest land use designation should be conservation, followed closely by low-intensity visitor-serving commercial, not residential. The draft LCLUP also fails to include areas already established as environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Why are you continue to flog a dead horse? This is futile on your part and a waste of time and resources for the city and as taxpayers. Stop this absolute nonsense and reject the draft as it currently stands, and submit a plan that is consistent with the state law. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Redfield, followed by Robin Rineos.
Good evening again, staff, council. Wow, February of 2020 seems like ages ago. Many, many thanks to planning staff, the city manager, council, and all involved getting this document to this point. I support the four recommended actions in the resolution and look forward to further public engagement and updates. As pointed out in staff's report, a revised LCLUP must mesh with the general plan. Given the compressed timeline with Pacifica's best interests always in mind, time for the community input and acknowledgement of staff's diligent, hard work, there should be a unanimous vote in favor. A few items in the document going over, and chapter five, pages 336 and 337 address and allow for new development considerations. Page 339 addresses the issue of sea level rise and the need for shoreline protections of critical infrastructures, safety of Pacificans, visitors, and the entire community. It also shows a model study of projected lateral and vertical erosion, which served to enhance the need for protections with resiliency as well. Chapter 6.1 points to policies incorporating state law, coastal commission policy, emerging science, and common sense. Page 357 contains a critical point. The policies do not include managed retreat as an adaption strategy unless and until a future LCLUP amendment and public input process culminates in supporting the strategy. Chapter 6.2, page 358, is seven bullet points that clearly acknowledge climate change is happening now. This is not a denial. Chapter 6.2 has six steps to address projections and reevaluation strategies as needed. And closed on page 366, the city has rejected managed retreat as a sea level rise adaptation policy in this LCP, and managed retreat could only become the policy of the city subsequent to a future amendment of the LCP. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Rineos is my final card. If anyone else wishes to speak, please fill it out.
Good evening, council members. Robin Rineos, Sharp Park. I understand it's very confusing what happened tonight and what was happening with this, but I have been involved with this for many, many years, participating in all the process. What you originally submitted in the LCP and the local plan for Sharp Park is actually what the public wanted for these neighborhoods and for the future of Pacifica, because the whole concept of managed retreat and what it represents to this neighborhood, which is where I live, but anywhere else on the beaches here in town, is, it's really frightening, it's very frightening. It's more frightening than managed retreat, because how would Pacifica, as Pacifica the city itself, respond to the changes to the neighborhoods and to the change in the economy and the threat to the economy of Pacifica? And how would we survive that? How would things be paid for? How do things get paid for anyway? But what I'm about to read to you is a different understanding of what I thought was going to be happening tonight, because I really felt by just reading when this was released that we were going to go back with what we originally proposed and to deny managed retreat as an overall plan for these neighborhoods. So I'm going to read this in the hopes that this is actually what will, actually end up what's happening for Pacifica, okay? Thank you to our Pacifica city staff members who wrote this revised draft of the October 2023 Pacifica Local Coastal Plan Use Plan. It was a long and mysterious wait for this revision, a response to the California Coastal Commission staff, but well worth it, in my opinion. I'm grateful and relieved this document represents what the majority of Pacificans asked for, a rejection of managed retreat, and a future with greater protection from flooding and storm surge in our beachside neighborhoods. Flooding, flooding this last winter was a problem all over town and thankfully managed by Pacifica's Department of Public Works. They are heroes in Sharp Park that pumped my flooded neighborhood out. Thank you. These revised drafts, this revised draft is hope for the city's economic future, for homes and livelihoods in Sharp Park, Rockaway Beach, and West Manor. It's a document that reflects Pacifica's desire to continue a vision of our unique community's potential and show we care and respect our beaches. I hope, and I hope to see, an improved promenade seawall and reinforced fishing pier on Beach Boulevard, providing safe public access and to a wonderful area for all to enjoy, allowing protection from storm surge and the care needed for this environment, this outdoor environment we all love. Our neighborhoods and beaches should both deserve a future in Pacifica. Thank you very much. Let's please adopt this, and let's move on to the Coastal Commission, where we shall get them to approve it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I have no other cards, final opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment at this time, and before going further, I'd like to entertain a motion from council to extend.
I move we extend the meeting till 11:30?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second, city clerk can tell me who seconded.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
It sounded like Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yeah.
Or we could flip a coin over it. Now, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
One of the stairs. The motion to extend the meeting to 11:30 passes unanimously, the motion was made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, I just wanted, so we received a letter, October 6, from the California Coastal Commission, and I just wanted to read the last little tiny paragraph, because I think it shows that the city is working with the Coastal Commission, and so this is what it says. "We appreciate the city's desire to have as complete an LUP update before the commission as possible, and are supportive of such an outcome. We continue to acknowledge and appreciate the thoughtful and collaborative work to date, and we look forward to continued conversations on this important LUP update. Please don't hesitate to contact me if you want further discussion." Yeah, I just wanted-
Appreciate that. I have a question. I detected just a handful of typos, I might have been going too fast to get them all, but there were three that stuck out at me. Would this be the appropriate time to bring them up, or did they get found in post anyway?
We would value any input you have on typos.
Sure, so the first one was on packet page 315, and it's where the red line is. It reads, "New buildings in buffer areas shall, supported by," I imagine there should be a B in between "shall" and "supported," shall be supported?
Yeah, stop it. Or maybe- Can you not strike out the other B? Or is, where did that strikeout come from? Or just insert a new B, is what you're saying?
So to be or to be is the question?
I knew you were going there.
Not to be.
It's three-
No, no, it's either to be or to be.
We would likely just not strike out the B.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
We will have the appropriate verb.
Keep the B. Keep the B.
I'm willing to keep this B.
Keep the B.
Keep the B.
We just received mail. Here you go. Okay, so now I'm on page 335. So to my mind, without the strikeout, it said the same thing but read better.
339?
335. Right now, it reads as, "However, water tanks located in the hills above populated areas to burst and inundate areas below due to a seismic event." I thought it read better as, "However, a seismic event may cause water tanks located in hills above populated areas to burst and inundate areas below."
I don't think there's a major substantive difference there. And if you prefer the drafting, I think we could just eliminate that red line.
Well, I think that if we keep the thing at the end, it needs to be harmonized or just reworked slightly to make sense. But I didn't understand if there was a reason why the original was struck out because it seemed to be the same. But I'm not a technician, so I don't know what I don't know. Okay, and then the final one I had was on packet page 349. And it's the fourth paragraph down, the paragraph that begins some areas shown on figure 5-4 along the southwestern. So it's the second line down, and it's the final FHSZ on there. And this is really super nitpicky, but it reads as fire hazard severity zone, zone. It seems like you could just get rid of that zone because it's already fire hazard severity zone.
I like it.
Very good.
One word removed. Thank you.
That's the extent of the typos that I detected.
I reserve the right to submit additional typos in the future.
I have one question on packet, if that's okay. Through the mayor.
I was just about to call on you. I saw you reaching for it. Although if anyone wants to utilize these lights, that's awesome.
Whatever.
It all works.
On packet page 240, where it says, "A feasibility study for ultraviolet treatment system at CCWRP," does that mean we're not planning on replacing them? So just to study it? Packet page 240 in the middle.
I think that's old because we are replacing it.
Right. So remember, we're trying to make a 2020 document better with 2022 information, which may be out of date in some instances.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's all I saw, then that's not bad, right?
So we're updating to the most recent out-of-date.
That's right.
Got it.
Very good, very good.
I have some questions. I can start if, but feel free to interrupt me because I'll. So packet page 186 on the resolution number three. I'm confused about the SEQA guidelines. So I understand adoption of revised sort of patient draft LCLUP is exempt from SEQA, blah, blah, blah. But then at the end, it says, "Section 15265 further provides that SEQA shall apply to the certification of a local coastal plan by the California Coastal Commission." I'm sorry, so I'm lost. Is SEQA required or not?
The simple answer is yes. So what these provisions do is shift the burden for SEQA compliance from the local agency to the California Coastal Commission. So SEQA is required. It's just saying that it will not apply to the local government's action on an LCP amendment, but it will apply to the Coastal Commission's action on the LCP amendment. And the Coastal Commission undertakes a SEQA equivalent process, so it's not technically SEQA, but it is compliance with environmental review requirements of state law.
Okay, so they will be undertaking that process as part of their review and queuing up of our.
That's correct.
So that'll be done before it gets to the Coastal Commission commissioners for review.
That's correct.
I think some of these comments I've made before on the general plan as well, but this is where it talks about the Coastal Regional Sediment Management Plan, and it says it's currently being developed, but it's actually been finished since 2017, as far as I know. And I just looked that up again today. So we might want to update that. I also don't know if there are recommendations in that plan that we might want to think about also. But I'll leave it at that. I'm not ready to delve into that document. And then on page 213, and this is where I wish I had my planning commissioners next to me, the addition of the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use center zonings, which I don't think were in here before because those were, you know, part of the general plan update. So those both talk about commercial spaces on the ground floor for the most part. And again, I just want to make sure we're not limiting ourselves if we want commercial or restaurant or, you know, some kind of public recreation on a higher level. I'm sorry, Christine, what page is that? It's on page 213. Both of those were confusing to me because it, I mean, like, mixed-use center says allowable use include ground-floor retail, restaurant, or personal service uses and housing or offices. And then that crossed out on upper levels. So I don't know. What's on an upper level, what's on a lower level? I just want to make sure we're not restricting those uses to lower levels.
Right, understood. And again, these are red line edits to incorporate what's in the general plan, so it's not a policy discussion item for changing these policies. That would be a separate action by the city council to amend both the general plan and then subsequently the LCLUP at some future time.
Just for clarity, after we adopt the housing element, there will be subsequent updates to the LCP wherever it falls at that time, correct?
That's potentially correct, right? Depending on what the final sites list is. For example, if land use designations need to change, for instance. That's right. And so just a general point again, as it relates to this three-meeting structure and sequence that the staff has articulated and recommended. You know, I know there remain a lot of questions by some in our community and potentially including city council members about, are these policies ultimately the right policies for Pacifica for the next 20 years, let's say, right? We are going to take you through with this process a sequence of events that explains what the Coastal Commission staff has recommended. That's meeting number one. Potential alternatives to that, some of which the city staff has discussed with Coastal Commission staff, that's meeting number two. And meeting number three is when you get to decide, do we want to push forward with the prior city council action, some comment letter that would revise that for certification? Or do we think a broader LCLUP process, you know, needs to be revisited? You could choose not to authorize that comment letter, for example, and direct some other more comprehensive process if a majority of the council wanted that at the conclusion of that meeting number three. So to whatever extent, you know, a council member tonight might be unsettled in some of these policies, this isn't your final endorsement that these will ultimately be the certified LCLUP provisions. But what we do need is the council's direction in this regard tonight to give us the time and space to have those community conversations so you can make that decision, you know, at the conclusion of the meeting number three stage.
Okay, so I shouldn't be questioning general plan or basic comments in here because this isn't the place to discuss them, is what I'm hearing. Sorry, if somebody else wants to go, I'm just, I'm trying to find my next comment. I can go if you're not ready. So I'm concerned a little bit about the coastal access maps and.
What page?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm just, the map is at the very back of the document. Let's see. Page 431, but then there's also a description on page 248. So I'm concerned because I know these are things that the Coastal Commission does care about, and there have been changes in the last few years, especially on the north end of town, where places where we used to have access, we no longer have access. For example, so on page 248, it talks about Pacific View Villas, Bluff Tops, and the trail that was along there, and that trail has been blocked off for at least a year. I think the map showed Esplanade at Manor was a public access point to the beach. I'm sorry, I have to go back and look at the map, but I, and anyway, that's no longer accessible and neither is the one south of the RV Park, number seven. That was fixed this last year as part of the Malagra Outfall, but in the storms, that has all washed away and is no longer accessible. So basically, I think between Sharp Park and the northern end of Pacifica, we only have one coastal access point right now. And I just want to make sure the Coastal Commission is clear on that if, you know, we need more. I'm forever telling tourists they have to go this long way to get down to the beach. And I think there's discussion further on about the one south of the RV Park, you know, about restoring public access, but I'm still not clear on whose responsibility that is too. Like, I know the one at Ocean Air is their responsibility to maintain, and I think this one may be the responsibility of the RV Park itself.
So this diagram is consistent between the general plan and LCLUP.
And I made those comments as part of the general plan.
Right. So the status of these access points and their serviceability will always change over time, and the plan won't necessarily always reflect their current condition. What this is intended to represent is where existing access points are, their intended type of access. Is it just bluff-top view or is it beach-level access? And if there are issues in maintenance and repairs or expansions and improvements that occur over time, those are not likely to be reflected effectively in a static map at one point in time. So this is really saying, should this be a beach-level access or should it not be? And then carrying that out and providing the policy support to provide that type of access in that type of location.
That doesn't make me happy for all of us on the north end of town. And it's, anyway, it seems to me the Coastal Commission would want to know that this document is incorrect.
But won't that come later? I mean, if there's going to be changes, so we're not.
But that's where I don't really understand. I mean, later, after we adopt it all and after the Coastal Commission has reviewed
No, during our.
Maybe Christine should address that comment exactly. I mean, I think Councilwoman Bowles is having issues with understanding the process in terms of, do we need to update these coastal access points? And I heard you saying no. And she is essentially just saying, well, now that we know that we should update it, when would we do that, if ever? And I think maybe you could just respond to that.
Right. I would contend it's likely to be a future LCP amendment if you want something different. The item tonight is to achieve consistency between the general plan and LCLUP. These diagrams are consistent with one another. This also isn't a topic that I, from memory, recall the Coastal Commission commenting on, so it wouldn't be set up in the framework of this process to comment on changing their suggested modification. So this would be perhaps some follow-on, you know, LCP periodic update or cleanup or what have you, whatever you'd like to call it, similar to how we periodically revisit the general plan to make sure it's updated and aligned with the current conditions and desires of the council.
Okay.
In point of fact, we kind of have that carved out in February before we go into goal setting, correct?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part, Mayor.
I say in point of fact, we have time in February that's more or less carved out so that we can look at how the general plan is doing and make comments about updates that might be helpful to make, and we have that set up before goal setting so that we can add it into the goal-setting process as need be.
That's correct, exactly. So the annual report on general plan implementation occurs in February just for that reason, so that anything identified in that process can be considered by council to work on in the coming fiscal year. So it's early enough to influence the goal-setting process. This is a good example. This diagram is also in the general plan, and if there's a desire to work on this or any other aspect of the general plan or LCLUP, that could be identified in February, prioritized, and if adopted, programmed in for the subsequent year.
I think it just brings up the point that, I mean, we didn't have a council member representing this district that really knows this area as well, and now we do. And, you know, so there are some things that are missing. Okay, I understand. Packet page 252.
You've represented the whole town.
Okay. I know, but you might not know the areas as well. That's all I'm. I'm sorry. I'll take that back. So this one, PR-I-7, this is adjustment of lateral shoreline easements. So the, what was in here before, new development must demonstrate that lateral access can be maintained for the expected life of the project, including consideration of effects of sea level rise. So that's part of what we're talking about with access and projects, and it's no longer accessible. Alternately, the city may determine that lateral public access is not necessary where public access would pose a safety risk or threat to fragile resources. So that would have been the city, I'm assuming, in the city council. And then now what's been added, which I don't see how this relates to the general plan, says alternately, the planning director may determine that lateral access is not necessary. So can you explain where that came from and how that relates to the general plan?
Sure. We're going to try to locate that specific provision in the general plan.
PR-I-7.
I'm sorry, say that again louder, please.
So it came directly from the general plan, policy OC-I-43. And so that was a conforming edit in the red lines made to achieve consistency between the general plan policy as adopted to include it in the comparable policy in the LCLUP.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
I don't need to make a comment. You covered the point with regard to general plan amendments in February, reviewing and clean up at that opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, and then packet page 262. I think there's a typo too. PR-I-26 says pursue public ownership of Rockaway Beach is maintained.
Noted, thank you.
Okay, and then on page 2. Okay, and then on page 277. There's two mentions of the Manor Overdrive Crossing, I think this is the first one. Sorry, I'm trying to find where... Yeah, so right under Manor Drive Overcrossing, it says Manor Drive Overcrossing is planned to be widened and signal control is recommended to be added to the intersections, blah, blah, blah. This project includes a new on-ramp to SR1 from Oceana Boulevard at Malagra Drive. And then, in another place, I think that was taken out, that was one of the options, but not something that was definitely included. So, I think, I think that's inconsistent in the document itself. The other place was page 281, PR-I-67.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bowles, and your comment regarding those two entries is what, again?
In this first one, it talks about the project including the new on-ramp to SR1, and then the other, it takes that out.
And what is your comment about that comment?
The project does not necessarily include that on-ramp. The project is considering that on-ramp as part of a solution, but that is something that's very controversial in the neighborhood, and so it was fixed in the other place on the...
So, so on that, let's stick to page 277.
Right.
That question has now been qualified by that final phrase in the sentence that says, though other alternatives that achieve similar congestion relief objectives are also being considered. So, that qualifies that first part of the sentence, but i, is that not sufficient for you to, to address the concerns that I just heard you raise?
If I may, if I may. I see what, what Councilmember Bowles is talking about on page 281.
On 281?
It's crossed out. 281, PR1, I mean PRI-67.
Yeah.
That phrase is crossed out, and a new ramp to SR1 from Oceana Boulevard to Malagra has been redlined. So, it doesn't match.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
So, we found the final language in the general plan.
Thank you.
So, there's language in the general plan that says, "The Manor Drive Overcrossing is planned to be widened and coordinated signal controls recommended to be added at the intersection of Manor Drive and Oceana Boulevard and Palmetto Avenue. This project could also potentially include a new on-ramp to SR1 from Oceana at Malagra Drive. Though other alternatives that achieve similar congestion relief objectives are also being considered."
I'm, I'm okay with that language. This, this language says the on-ramp is part of the project.
Understood, yeah, we'll make the conforming amendment.
I remember when we had that discussion at council, yep. It goes lengthy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I think sometimes when you, you get so emotional or intense about it, your voice goes down low.
Oh, thank you. I probably lose my microphone. Okay, and then page 283, I appreciate that a lot of the transit things have been updated, but Route 140 is also deleted, and I think the SAM Trans On-Demand Ride Share Service Pilot in Lindemar has also been deleted. So, I'm, I'm just curious why we're deleting and updating some things and not other things.
I mean, the only answer I can provide is we're aligning with the general plan, and so, to the extent that the general plan provisions may have been out of date or inaccurate, achieving consistency.
Are you suggesting that could be a cleanup item, then?
Absolutely could, yes.
And things change all the time, so it's going to be difficult to continue, like, for another 20 years based on something that was...
Right, no, I understand, we have to pick a point in time, so, yeah, maybe, yeah. So, so I'm okay if it's, if, if that's what the general plan says, I guess. And, and I guess, just looking at some of the flooding and stormwater discussions later on, does the, does the general...
The page, please.
Well, 297, sorry. I, I, I know we've just completed the stormwater master plan that identified the flooding in Sharp Park, and, again, it seems like that's an important thing to include in here that's missing, but maybe it's not in the general plan, so...
But if we just finished it, then it wouldn't be in the general plan, right? Or am I, I could be understanding that wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't remember. And same, yeah, Heritage Tree Ordinance, same thing, there were some errors there.
So, this is an example where the annual progress report on implementation of the general plan would hopefully recognize we've accomplished some of these planning or capital improvement components, we could report on that, take credit, and the council could determine, is it important enough to trigger the work that's required to amend the general plan, or do we recognize with a plan with a 20-year horizon, over time, bits and pieces will be completed, but we don't necessarily need to make every, you know, line-by-line revision to reflect the current status. That's a judgment call for council. There is a fair amount of work involved even with minor general plan amendments, but that would be, you know, an established process to do these periodic status changes, if you will, about completion, or setbacks, or inclusion of new work that's needed.
Okay, just, just two more things, if you can bear with me, I'll, I'll skip the other minor ones. So, on packet page 336, 337. So, I'll just read it. Within the coastal zone, the bottom of 336, "Within the coastal zone, the city requires new development to be setback from coastal bluffs enough to accommodate a 100-year event weather caused by seismic, geotechnical, or storm conditions, unless this limitation makes the property undevelopable. Areas determined by, areas determined by the study to be unsuitable for development shall be set aside for permanent environmental protection as part of development." So, this, this is new, that wasn't in there before. I don't, does that tie into general plan policy?
It does.
Is it easy for you to point me to, to that?
On page 8-10 of the general plan.
Okay. So, the hazard section. And then, the, the next page kind of continues about site stability surveys, and says, "New development that would require the use of seawalls or other shoreline alterations for protection either now or in the future shall not be permitted unless this would make the property undevelopable." I guess I don't remember that either, I, from reading the local coastal plan before, I, what I remember is that seawalls and protection are okay for existing structures, and I know the definition of existing structures is being considered and litigated, but this is talking about protection being okay for new development, which seems problematic.
So, what this is trying to do is reflect the reality of the constitution and takings considerations, and so there may be an instance where, you know, despite the best imperatives of coastal resource protection in the coastal act, it could deny all economic use of one's property. And so, when that occurs, the potential exists for a takings, and so, this is saying in certain circumstances, we may need to allow some minimal amount of development with a seawall to avoid a takings, for example.
Okay, I, I guess I'm not sure the Coastal Commission is going to go for this. And this is something new they haven't seen, right? And, and I mean, we have the experience at 1567 Beach Boulevard, where they didn't allow any development in the end.
It'll certainly be a case-by-case basis. The coastal act does account for circumstances like this, and the coastal act does need to comply with the U.S. Constitution, for example, related to property rights and takings. So, there are instances where the Coastal Commission will be obliged to okay development, and there will be instances where the facts applied to that circumstance may not justify allowing development. It's difficult to say, and it is very fact-specific.
And, and to your point, Councilmember Bowles, that's an excellent point that you made, that the Coastal Commission may very well raise this as an issue that they have, which means that in this process that we've let, led, laid out, the three-step process that staff has laid out for you, you will have the opportunity to address that, because it will be a comment from the Coastal Commission, so the council's going to have to weigh in on that. So, that is a perfect example of how the discussion that you just brought up will be discussed in this process, in the current process laid out by staff, because it's most likely something that the Coastal Commission will raise.
Okay. And then, just one last thing, I, the fire map, which I...
What page?
Uh, 349.
I'm sorry, what was that?
349, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, is it 349? Sorry, 349 is the discussion, the map is on page, a different page. 444.
You're going to need to give me a minute to scroll there.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm not like a wizard.
While we're giving you that minute. I said while we're giving her that minute.
Oh, I, I'm not making the motion, I just said to do a time check.
I move that we extend the meeting to 11:45.
11:45?
All second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Are you, are you there, Michelle?
Motion to extend to 11:45 made by Bowles and seconded by your unanimous vote.
Please, I'm almost there, so just keep going.
If you wanted to rush, I should have extended to midnight.
No, I'm rushing, I, I'm there. I'll be able to retain it, go ahead, in my apologies.
Okay, this, this was part of the subject of my appeal of the general plan, so, and, and I brought this up at the time, this particular fire map does not match the fire map in the general plan or in the EIR. This was the original fire map that was in the draft before it got changed in this last go-round, and this map shows very high fire hazards, severity zones, and the city limits in Pedro Point, and the general plan specifically says there are no very high fire hazard zones in city limits. So, it's, it's, it's a discrepancy.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowles, we can take a closer look and see if we can incorporate the comparable general plan exhibit to replace this, this figure.
Maybe, I shouldn't have said anything, because I like this map better.
I almost said something, I'm like, isn't this what we want?
We've seen the new one, it was shockingly...
Well, we, no, they haven't done the new ones for the LRA areas, that's part of the problem.
The one, yeah, the one adjacent, you're right.
Yeah. Anyway, but, yeah, I had other minor comments that don't really matter. I'm all in favor of the process and of pulling the, the current submittal and resubmitting, and working with the Coastal Commission, you know, in the process identified. I, I am not comfortable, though, approving this redline version as it is today, but I'm okay being the sole vote that way, so...
Have the other comments or questions? I would just say, before someone makes a motion, that I like that it is apparent by the Coastal Commission's own word that we are working with them, and I like that the community is going to have, apparently, a robust opportunity to weigh in on that work and to direct us one way or the other when the time comes. And collaboration, good, the idea of finding ways past impasses, good. And, you know, I, I look forward to seeing what that work with Coastal Commission staff has looked like, so that community can weigh in on it, which, of course, will inform whether or not we like what that process has looked like backstage or not, and, you know, anything. Hopefully, there, there are recommendations that the community will be able to favor that move us in the positive direction to update the LCLUP without losing that which the community holds most dear. Mayor Protam?
I'd like to make a motion.
Make it.
Adopt the attached resolution certifying that the revised certification draft LCLUP is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the California Coastal Act, two, directing the city manager to incorporate the 2040 general plan consistency revisions into the existing certification draft LCLUP, to form the revised certification draft LCLUP and adopting the revised certification draft LCLUP, and three, approving transmittal of the revised certification draft LCLUP to the California Coastal Commission, CCC, for certification, and four, finding that approval of the revised certification draft LCLUP is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and provide direction... Do we have to do the provide?
Unless there's further comment from the council on the community engagement plan, I think the first part of the motion was sufficient.
Okay. So, moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
And the motion made by Councilmember Vodorlos, seconded by Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protam Vodorlos, seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer, passes with a vote of four to one, with Councilmember Bowles opposed.
Okay, with that, meeting is adjourned.